Good evening. Being 6:03 and past the hour of 6:00 PM, I have called the meeting of the Westboro Select Board, properly called here for Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. As we in the meeting, I would ask all those that are able to please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As standard, we'll kick off the meeting tonight with open forum. Is there anybody here for open forum this evening? Okay, seeing nobody for open forum. We do have some public hearings, but it's not 6:10.
Can you do Town Manager update?
Yeah, what do you want to go do?
Sure.
Town Manager update?
So I don't have a printed report for you tonight, but I will put this into a report form so I can add it to the website. The one thing that I just wanted to update everyone on is that we will be effective Thursday, moving our Youth and Family Services Outreach and Resource Coordinator to the Senior Center. I know that the board has seen some concern about that. I just want to be clear that that's only a portion of the plan. The current position has flexibility to be out of the office for 20 hours. That was something that we changed in April of 2024. And so, and so that employee is out of the office for that time period doing outreach and meeting folks in different locations, such as the food pantry and other things. And so what we've identified is some additional locations in the downtown where there might be scheduled appointments or office hours, inclusive of the community center, and then also an office within the town hall. So for folks who are reaching out to that employee, the phone number that's currently on the website is the same phone number that will reach them in their office. The email address that they have is the same email address that they would continue to have, and then counseling or clinical services will continue to be at the Forbes location. That's my update.
Great. Anything else?
Do you want to do issues and correspondence?
Sure.
We only have five minutes, we should be saying.
What's that?
I say we only have five minutes, we can keep it short.
Yeah, I like that.
Starting with.
Mark might be at the end, yeah. Okay, I am going to start with, go to issues and correspondence, so item 13 on our agenda, which was originally scheduled for 9:00 PM, but Sean, I'll go to you first.
Thank you, Ian. Last night, some of us had the honor of attending Quilts of Valor in front of the Forbes Municipal Building, where a father and his two sons were awarded quilts that was Tim Brosnahan and his sons, Tim and Shawn Brosnahan, and it was real honor. Andy Turock led the proceedings, supported by Paula Horrigan and Dan Fenton, as well as many other veterans and family members of those being honored. And I would just like to say thank you to Andy and the veterans and everybody involved in these events. It's always special. So thank you very much, Andy, and congratulations, and thank you to the Brosnahan's for their service. That is all I had.
Great. Patrick? Shelby?
Sure. So, a quick update as liaison to the Economic Development Committee, and sorry, let me just scroll to my notes here. Sorry. Glasses off. So the EDC met last week, and a couple updates coming out of that. So we awarded two grants to two downtown businesses. One is to a new business starting called Craft Lab. They're going to be doing arts and gathering place over next to the Velari Studio here, right off the Rotary, and they were awarded a $5,000 grant for window changes, lighting, electrical work that's needed, and painting and that sort of thing. So excited, if anyone has a chance to watch that meeting, the owner presented, she's got lots of energy and is already collaborating with the Cultural Council and is looking forward to getting involved and working with our coordinator, so that's great. And then the other awardee was the Polish pup. That owner was seeking $4,862 for improvements for dryer, dehumidifier, air purifier, and a bathing system. Right now, she's taking all of those towels and everything home to her home, probably not the most efficient, and this is a great opportunity. The response, she said, to her business has been very positive and is growing. We also mapped out a plan for each member of the EDC to sort of be focused, if you will, on a subcommittee to make our work more efficient. And so we, I won't get into a lot of details, but just to highlight, we have folks working on the annual awards, we have folks working as, working with the ambassadors, a liaison to civic groups, someone working on grants, and then we need someone else for it to kind of work on the Halloween and holiday stroll. And, let's see, I think, oh, Laura, our coordinator, updated us that the branding for the downtown that this board previously approved for the new logos and such, Phase One is nearly complete, and the whole process is to be completed June 2026, and then placement to take place after that. And Laura also provided us with a number of statistical updates and asked her that those be posted. I won't read them here, but I'm happy to send those in an email to the board, just as an FYI. Things around how many one-stop meetings, how many site selection inquiries, business expansion, departures, et cetera. And final item is the signed bylaw is being reviewed by a third party to help ultimately bring forward a recommendation on that. And we're going to hear from one perspective business tonight, but UNOS has an active permit, I think everyone's aware of that, in Chill, coming into the former Mexicali. So that is that update. And then on a personal note, I just want to say, extend thank you to the Senior Center staff, as well as the many volunteers. My mother-in-law Sally Smith passed away last Sunday, and she was 88. For those of you that knew her, she was a firecracker, to say the least. I think some board members experienced that during some of the bagels with the boards, and I want to thank fellow board members for coming to the services as well. But most importantly, I really want to thank all the staff for, and this is just a very direct message, if you ever doubt the value that you're bringing as a member of the Senior Center staff or as a volunteer there, don't, because you changed her life, and her one thing was, she wished that she had gone there sooner. So thank you to everyone and for all your thoughts.
Great, thanks. We're past 6:10. Mark, are you okay? Nope, are you okay? You and I will go to the end?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing on Sean's?
Yes.
Just, I was there also, and it was wonderful, and I won't try and steal any thunder, but it was recorded by Westboro TV, if anyone's interested in the Quilt of Valor ceremony. It was really a special night, so.
Good point. Thank you. Okay, so being past 6:10 PM, we do have a public hearing scheduled. I would, this is a public hearing on the request of Good Cause LLC, doing business as Brio 33 at 33 East Main Street for a new Section 12 All Alcohol Liquor License.
I'm going to recuse myself because I am a partner member of the organization, so.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing. I will ask for a motion to open the public hearing. So move. Second. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, four to zero, four being present, one recusal, so the public meeting is open. So this is a public hearing, butters have been notified. As I mentioned, Good Cause LLC, doing business as Brio 33, has requested a new Section 12 All Alcohol license, and they are going in the space at 33 East Main Street that formerly housed Tavolinos. A completed application was included in our packet to the board, but this is a public hearing, so I'll first open it up to the proponents to talk about it, and then we'll open it up for any public comments, so. Good evening. Just want to introduce yourselves would be, for the record, be great.
Good evening, we're honored to be here tonight. My name is Abigail Lunit, and I am standing here in representation of Good Cause LLC and as General Manager at Brio 33 Restaurant.
And my name is Kevin Sanders, I will be the executive chef at Brio.
We are also joined by our business manager, Gail Hanson, our HR Director, Susan Peckering, and our landlords, Deborah and Randy Waterman. If it's, if it is permitted, I was hoping to share a little bit about who we are.
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Brio 33 is a new beginning. The word brio conveys vivacity and liveliness. Located aside the common, we are at the heart of downtown Westboro, with our combined passion and between us, I think, 25 years.
Twenty-five years.
Restaurant experience.
Twenty of which being onsite at 33 East Main Street, so we're very familiar with the space.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time there, and I feel like I grew up in that building. So with our combined passion, the years in the industry, we hope to bring some brio back to 33 East Main Street. We would not be standing here without our, the amazing support of the Westboro community. As a team, we are committed to give back to our community by providing a welcoming environment where friends and families can gather to enjoy great food and drinks in a safe and inviting environment. We understand the utmost importance of responsible alcohol service and are committed to ensuring that our establishment adheres to all local laws and regulations. We will ensure that all staff are properly trained, equipped, and fully supported to abide by these state and local laws. Our commitment to the well-being and safety of our guests and staff alike will be held with the greatest respect. We understand that the repercussions can be dire if we fail to do so. We believe that Brio 33 will be a positive, positive and vibrant addition to our community, and we thank you for considering our application tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions from the board before I open it up for any public comments?
Mr. Ford.
Okay, great. Is there anybody here in the public that wishes to speak? Okay.
I believe in our email, we got, we did receive a letter in support of this application.
Yes. Okay, so no comments, no questions from the board, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the Section 12 All Alcohol Liquor License for Good Cause LLC, doing business as Brio 33 at 33 East Main Street, naming Abigail Luna and as the manager of record.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present. Congratulations, we look forward to the opening.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and just one thing, and you stole my thunder, and thank you for what you said about the alcohol stuff, and I always say this to everyone coming before us, is that, you know, we love to give out or present these alcohol licenses because it really is something that we know the community wants and deserves to basically dine here in Westboro, but we take it seriously. We'd love to give them out and love seeing you here tonight. We don't want to see you back in again because of violations, so thank you for that, and best of luck. We look forward to you opening hopefully sometime soon.
All right, thank you, and we look forward to seeing everyone.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you so much. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present. Thank you all for being here, appreciate it. Okay, jumping back, Mark, you got two minutes or a little bit more. Going back to.
Kidding? All right, so.
Issues and correspondence.
So sorry, guys, I thought, I put this away, but this Saturday, July 26th, there's a food drive, Phil the Truck Food Drive at Roach Brothers. Mark's moving in storage, Westboro Food Pantry and Roach Brothers are sponsoring, so if everybody could please keep that in mind as.
You speak more to the mic there.
You don't have to buy the groceries from Roach, but if you can get your donations down to Roach Brothers on Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. The other, the only other thing I wanted to bring up tonight was the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust had a meeting on, sorry, that's still not loud enough?
Well, it's hard to hear right there.
Can you guys hear me okay? That's better. All right. The Westboro Affordable Housing Trust had a meeting on Friday, July 11th. The noteworthy items, and we discussed quite a few things, but the noteworthy items are the High Street Extension and Beach Street projects will be going to Community One Stop for Department Head Feedback, and the, let me just go back to the minutes, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, the Three Baylor Street is up for, on the MCO website for lottery applications, so that's an affordable housing unit, and the website is mcohousing.org, I believe. But it's an opportunity for somebody to get into a nice single, brand-new, single-family home subsidized with income restrictions. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. I'll just go, I know we're 6:20, I'll just go real quick, I only have one thing. Most, because of the July 4th holiday, between our things, not meetings, were canceled for the month of July. We do have a special meeting, though, coming up on Monday night for the Trustees of Soldiers' Memorial. I think, as we had mentioned before, we had two resignations of veteran members, so by state law, the. So, by state law, the Trustees of Soldiers Memorial Committee, the remaining members of that, which I represent the board as chair of the select board as a member, will basically interview and appoint those, to fill those two vacancies. Because it's the first time we're doing it, the chair has reached out to the town clerk, who will come to our meeting, just tended to educate us on state law, and also we're using as an opportunity for her to re-educate us in the committee on open meeting law. So, that will be a nice chance for the town clerk to attend and help us out with that. The second thing, and I'll talk about it more probably our following meeting, but we are getting close, hopefully, to the delivery of the new Veterans Monument that will go into the new cemetery up on Nurse Street. It should be, it's supposed to be delivered by the middle of, the middle of August. So, we're hopeful on that. That is kind of under the control of the D.P.W., but with the, working alongside the Trustees of Soldiers Memorial. So, we're looking forward to that being delivered and installed for that cemetery. And that is all that I had, so we've concluded that agenda item for now, unless someone thinks of something before they come up. So, now we are past six-twenty, which is the scheduled time for the public hearing. This is a request of Release Wellbeing Center, Inc., doing business as Release Wellbeing Center at two-oh-one Turnpike Road, for an amendment to their Section Twelve All Alcohol Liquor License to change location to two-oh-three Turnpike Road. I would, it is a public hearing. All the butters were properly notified, so I would look for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. The public hearing is open. Is there anyone here? Oh. Hello. Didn't see you hiding over there.
Hi, I'm Linda Townsend. I'm the owner of Release Wellbeing Center, and we're asking to move our liquor license from two-oh-one Turnpike Road to two-oh-three Turnpike Road. We recently subleased to Ramon Gallo of Taco Burrow, and he opened a Mexican, healthy Mexican restaurant in our old Nourish Cafe space. So, we wanted to move and free up that liquor license potential for Ramon. And then we will move to serve Prosecco to our spa guests in two-oh-three. That's the hope.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. Public hearing. Is anybody from the public that wishes to comment? Okay, seeing nothing. I have a motion.
I'll move to approve the amendment to the request of Release Wellbeing Center, Inc., doing business as Release Wellbeing Center at two-oh-one Turnpike Road, for an amendment to their Section Twelve All Alcohol Liquor License to change location to two-oh-three Turnpike Road. Subject to all, to the applicant signing, all required documentation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present, as approved. Thank you for coming for us.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Keep up the good work up there. Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Our next agenda item, which is related to the alcohol compliance check offenses, is scheduled for six-thirty. Do we want to hold till six-thirty? Not sure if all the folks are represented here.
Can you, can we ask if they're represented, because it's not a public hearing, so.
Right, yeah, as long as. I don't know if anyone from Mayuri is here.
Can we start with the coop?
Okay. Is anyone from the coop here?
Okay.
Do we want to? Do we want to hold off?
Yeah, I guess if no one's here.
Let's give it five minutes, yep.
I do see members of the civic club here.
Okay.
I don't know.
Do we want to do?
Do we want to do the?
Nine or ten?
The nine, I think the town moderator is coming for nine.
Yeah.
Ten, four.
Five.
Apologies for that, trying to move things around. Is, I know we had the civic club here for the plaza next to Town Hall at six-forty-five, or are there more members coming?
Ian, I could probably do some more issues and correspondence.
Do you want to ask again if anyone's here for the?
Is anyone here for Mayuri or the coop? Okay, all right.
Oh, and the coop as well? I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay.
So, I have, just going by agenda, and I apologize, I didn't see you there. So, so.
Do you want me to open it?
Yeah. So, this is agenda item four on alcohol compliance check offenses. And two businesses, the coop and Mayori Indian Cuisine, are here in front of us tonight, but Kristy, do you want to?
Sure. So, the police department conducted alcohol compliance checks at thirty businesses on June seventeenth, and there were two businesses that did fail the compliance checks. You have representatives from the police department here, if you have questions for them. The first is the coop. It's a first offense for the coop. The select board does have a policy on how you deal with such offenses, and the first offense in your policy has been a warning. For Mayuri, it's a second offense, and in the policy, it calls for a three-day suspension. You do have within your packet information from town council and sort of options for how you want to handle this, but you also have your policy within the document. We do have the hire date and tip certification for the individual at the coop. We do not have that information for Mayuri.
Great. Thank you.
Ian, can I add one thing?
Yes.
So, I just think it's important for the public to note that there's a very specific process that the police follows, and I don't know that we need to explain it here, but we received that information as members of the board. They have a very specific process. They document it, and that is part of our packets and part of the public record.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I know we have the police here. Is there anything, chief, or anybody from the police that you want to comment on before we go? Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Todd Manari, your police chief. I think the town manager covered it. The officers who were involved in the compliance checks are here. If their testimony is required, I think you've been given their reports. The process was overseen by the detective bureau. Detective Sergeant McCray and Detective Dappleit worked on the operations plan, the operational briefing. They made sure the compliance checks were done in accordance with our policy and proper procedures. So, they're here if their testimony is required.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, the first business, we'll call up if you don't mind, is the coop. They have a Section Twelve All Alcohol License located here at thirty-two West Main Street, so. Welcome. If you could just introduce yourself. Sorry, please, for this.
My name's Angelo Setzos. I'm the owner of the coop. And ever since this happened, I've been sick over it. We have a, we do have an alcohol policy. Every time someone orders a drink on my POS system, I'm not sure if you have the receipt in front of you, it says "check ID" on it. Just to reiterate to our employees, they have to check IDs. Obviously, during the circumstance, that wasn't done. I've been talking with my staff. We have such a small staff, maybe four or five servers. I've sat down with them just to go over this again. I'm not sure if they let their guard down. It's unacceptable, not how I want to run my business, and I apologize.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Thank you for coming here today.
Yep. I can sense from your thing that you don't want to be here. We don't like doing these either, but.
I saw the previous couple here, and I'm like, I remember when I was here, when they were here.
Yeah.
So, would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I would move to issue a written warning to the coop at thirty-two West Main Street for violation of their liquor license on June seventeen, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any comments? I think I would just add, and as we talked about it, it's, you know, we have a policy that we have in place as a board. This is following policy, but, you know, subsequent offenses become more dire. So, this is a warning. This has been kind of what our policy has been. But again, I know you don't want to be back here. We hope not to see you back here.
Definitely not. This employee is also sick over it, too. She's so upset. She's a good employee, too, so I issued her a two-week suspension, just to give her another chance, because she's a real good kid, so.
Thank you.
This doesn't happen again.
Thanks.
Yeah, I do, oh.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you sharing kind of the remedies you've taken on your end for training. I'm glad to hear your POS system has it. We're human beings. They make mistakes. That's why it's a warning on the first time, and I can appreciate the, you know, the seat you're in or standing, and so we want you to continue to do business and serve alcohol safely. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Just one quick reminder. I'm sure you were given the guidelines in our policy at some point when you first applied.
Yes.
The way I read it is if there's a second offense in the next five years, the policy is a three-day suspension. So, that's, you know, this doesn't just go away tomorrow.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Thanks.
Great. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. What's that? Great. So, the second business, and if you want to come forward, is Mayori Indian Cuisine. Again, a Section Twelve All Alcohol License, business located at thirty Lyman Street. As the town manager mentioned, this is a second violation, the first being on June first, twenty-twenty-two, and the second one being on June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. So, thank you for coming in front of us. I just want to introduce yourselves for the record.
Members of the board, my name's David Vertnazi. I'm attorney in Milford. This is Ramesh Jangareddy. He is one of the principals of Mayuri, and he's one of the managers on the license.
Great, thank you.
So, I would suggest you that this was something of an unfortunate, obviously an unfortunate incident, but one I would suggest you that is unlikely to recur. In this instance, the young lady involved was not an employee of the restaurant, but was a family member who was helping out, standing in on a temporary basis while Mr. Jangareddy ran some errands. And it was his intention that she would be at a hostess stand. He believed that she understood that that did not involve any service of alcohol. There was no intention that she would be involved in any way in the service of alcohol. Again, he believed that she understood that, but in hindsight, it would appear that that was not the case. So, I would suggest you, just owing to the circumstances of this particular incident, it is unlikely to occur, recur, but Mr. Jangareddy is putting some policies into place to ensure that it does not, you know, he intends to have a written policy that he has temporary or probationary workers sign, acknowledging that they're not supposed to be involved in any way in the service of alcohol. He also intends to require that employees who are not engaged to serve alcohol, but whose duties might cause them to brush up against the service of alcohol, also go through the certification process so that if confronted with this kind of an incident, they'll know the appropriate way to handle it. Throughout this investigation, throughout this matter, Mr. Jangareddy has been forthright and cooperative with the town, and he wants to assure the town that he remains committed to working with the town to ensure that there are no future issues involving this license.
Thank you. Do you have anything from your side, or you don't have to speak, but anything, but you're welcome to.
I always work with the town, and we want to take the strict measures. And we want to work with the staff all the time, and make sure that they're committed to it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, if a three-day. Am I not?
Go just closer, because you really can't hear.
Okay. Apparently, one of us should have been sitting back there the whole time.
I know, no, really, it's amazing.
Are you volunteering?
All right. So, if a three-day suspension is decided upon, I guess, how are those dates selected? Like, does the business select them? Do we select them?
It would be up to the board, and you could certainly engage the business in that discussion if you chose.
So, if I may? Yeah, so, obviously, an unfortunate incident, read the report. It says you described, it is unfortunate, and we do have a policy which is unfortunate, you know, as the case would present itself. So, you know, unfortunately, I would be, I think we have to hold up to our three-day suspension, because if we have a policy and we don't enforce it, then what's the point of having a policy? I would like to work with the applicant to understand, you know, from a practical perspective, when that, the suspension could be in place. And my philosophy would be sooner than later. So, it's over and done with, and we move on, but certainly, through you, Mr. Chair, would be interested in that.
Great.
I think from Mr. Jangareddy's perspective, if there was to be a suspension, he would like to see it perhaps on a series of Monday nights, consecutive Monday nights, rather than, you know, all in a row, which will have a more severe effect on the business.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Kristy? How do we ensure that a suspension is being upheld?
I don't know if the chief could speak to that. I know that in the past, when we've had issues with other liquor licenses, we've asked the police department to check in.
Okay, so, I would, I would just like to hear from our police chief if that creates a hardship. If it's spread out over the course of three weeks, it seems to me it may, but maybe if officers are, if that's not impractical, then I'd be open to that.
Todd Manari, your police chief, the police department would be willing to work with the restaurant, and whatever the board decides.
Thank you.
Great. And just a question. I'm assuming the restaurant is typically open on Mondays, is that correct?
I was looking it up right now.
That would have been a good trick, though.
Yeah.
Let's do it on Mondays.
Yep. I think in looking at the policy, it doesn't say it has to be a consecutive three-day period. So, I think that's in our description.
It does require the business to turn in the license, though. So, you would need to turn it in each, in advance of each Monday. I don't know, I guess prior to opening, prior to your typical opening on Monday.
Where would that?
At our.
Town clerk's office?
Select points, yep.
That's the clerk's office.
And then they'd have to go back on Tuesday and pick it up?
Yeah, I think that's sort of the benefit of the consecutive day suspension.
Yeah.
So, it's been three years since the last offense?
Yes. And our policy has been, is basically a five-year window. It's, you know.
No, I, yeah, no, I understand that. I'm just.
So, for purpose of discussion, I'll make a motion, and then we can go from there. So, I would move to suspend the liquor license issued to Mayori Indian Cuisine at thirty Lyman Street on, and again, this is where, on three consecutive Mondays, on a date, on a date to be determined based on this discussion, for their second violation, the first being June one, twenty-twenty-two of their liquor license, and the second on June seventeen, twenty-twenty-five. So, I guess to that motion, then I would just say, today is the twenty-second, is the twenty-eighth, August fourth, and the eleventh, as reasonable as possible.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, I get Mr. Jangareddy's committed to working with you.
Okay, so, on those dates.
Twenty-eighth, July twenty-eighth, August fourth, and August eleventh.
Right.
Yeah, I would, I'm amenable to that. You know, a third offense is five days. I would remind you that it's a five-year. days. I would remind you that it's a five-year window, and it restarts as of this offense, so.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments, or?
I just want to clarify, you had said Monday evening, so, but it looks like you're open for lunch, so it would be for the, the entire service period.
Yep.
So it would be for the-
Entire day.
For the entire day.
Yep. Great.
The only thing I just want to be clear on, so the expectation would be to physically turn the license in that the morning of each of those days, and then your responsibility to pick it up on the Tuesday morning. And Kristi, what time do offices open on, um, Tuesdays?
Uh, eight, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock in the morning.
And on Mondays, too.
So both days, the, they go community, and there would be someone here?
Correct.
Yep.
Yep.
Correct.
Great, any further comments? Just that, yo, it's disappointing. Um, you know, as I said, to the owners, if you were here earlier, that, you know, when we issued these, we, we, we actually do like to issue these. We do like having you operate and having your restaurant. We know it's a valued restaurant here in Westboro. We want to keep it that way. Um, so please, I know you're taking this seriously, but we, we really do not want to see you back in front of us again. Um, but we also want to support your business here in Westboro and, and hope that you thrive. So, um, please take it back. I appreciate the policies your attorney has brought up. I think it makes sense, and anything you can do to continue to educate, um, anybody associated with, with the restaurant. I know this was an unfortunate incident, but it still is an incident that occurred, so, um, thank you for that. Um, okay, all those in favor? That's five to zero, five being present. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, just, uh, thank you to our police officers.
As always, thank you. Okay, um, moving on to item five. Plaza next to town hall between thirty-two and thirty-four West Main Street. Um, Kristi, anything you want to introduce us with, or just?
Sure. Um, uh, so the Civic Club has reached out and wants to offer a very generous donation of fifty thousand dollars in order to make, uh, make improvements or sort of fit out the plaza. Um, so the plaza between, uh, town hall and the coop, um, as the boards aware, um, we executed documents that, uh, made it possible for us to add some benches or other things, uh, to that location. We executed that, uh, earlier this spring. Um, and so, the, in, in working with the Civic Club, um, the proposal was that the, the donation would be made, and then the town would, would purchase, um, you know, certain items, uh, working with the Civic Club. So, um, so we need to create a gift account in order to receive those funds, um, which would be specific for, um, improvements and beautification of that plaza. Um, I don't want to sort of steal the thunder, but I know there is a, there's a recommendation within here, um, to name the, that location Civic Plaza, um, at, per our new naming policy. Um, the board will have to vote, uh, at a future meeting to, um, to identify that location as something that you're looking for names. Um, I've let the Civic Club know that we would let them know when that happens, so they can certainly submit that as one option, and then the board would move through your, um, your process per your policy.
Perfect, thank you. So welcome.
Walter Leslie, two oh seven West Main Street.
And Steve Hart, twenty-two Brewer Drive.
Thanks. Um, our president, George Grusner, is unavailable tonight to give the talk, so they pulled a couple of president, oh, ex-presidents out of the weeds to, to help out. Um, I'm aware that the board is very aware of the Civic Club, but since we have this large audience, um, on Westboro TV, we thought we'd take a couple minutes just to let other people know about the club. Um, we're, uh, born in nineteen seventy-five. Some, luckily for us, somebody came up with the idea of doing this. Um, they came up with really wanting to benefit the town of Westboro and its residents. That was its purpose. Uh, today, we still have about fifty members, but real, reality is thirty are pretty much active members. Our oldest member, Don Shapley, is actually an original member. You see, only one from the nineteen seventy-five, although, uh, our vice president, Mr. Kohler, has probably been here almost forty years, or, so he was a kid when he started. Beyond that, on the slide, you can see our current, uh, board, and we do have some other civic, uh, members here, including our treasurer, uh, Mark Lippett, and Peter Allen, who've been involved in the, uh, the fiftieth anniversary planning. Um, in addition to meeting, the, the primary thing that the Civic Club does is we donate funds back to the community. Put some real numbers down in twenty twenty-three. That was forty-eight thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-four is fifty-six. Um, this year, we're on our usual forty to fifty thousand dollar pace, um, but we're looking to do something additional because, uh, of the excitement of, uh, fiftieth anniversary. In addition to, uh, financial donations, the club, uh, volunteers at Food Pantry, Earth Day Cleanup, July Fourth Block Party, and some other, um, things that are more involved with, uh, effort than money. Um, someone calculated that we gave approximately one point two million dollars since the club's beginning. It's a little difficult to do exactly, because as you would guess, the records from the first twenty or twenty-five years are a little less robust, uh, but, uh, that, that's about the number, which is, uh, an amazing thing. Um, we cover a lot of areas: food insecurity, education, community events, youth, um, senior citizens, sports, um, and you can see many of the, uh, types of things we don't, groups we donate, um, within the community. Our big thing is our tree and resale. Happens starting Saturday of Thanksgiving. Um, that's our only fundraiser, and we sell in fourteen to fifteen hundred trees, hundreds of wreaths, roping. It's all over at Hastings Elementary School now that, uh, uh, we moved there, what, about four or five years ago, or something like that?
Yes, yep.
Um, after the Cumberland Farms went into where we used to always hang out. Um, so that, that's a, that's really what fuels the, uh, the engine. Um, in addition, we have our annual fishing challenge. Just bringing it up because it's, uh, we get about a hundred fifty people, um, from the, the town and, and local community to come and learn how to free, uh, fish for free. We've partnered with Mass Fish and Wildlife, and, uh, and that's always a fun time. So that's just a quick intro. I will say that the club is always looking for members, and they can contact us, um, on our Facebook page, or on our P O box, or, um, by looking us up, and, uh, we'd be glad to talk to them. And with that, I'd like to have, uh, Steve will talk a little bit about the, uh, donation.
Thank you. Yes, good evening, everybody. I, I actually suspect I saw a little shudder go through the ranks when I appeared, because the last five years, I've been asking you for money. But that's with a different hat. Um, you know, as, as, as Walter's explained, you know, we, and, and as we say on every slide, that the club was formed for the sole purpose of benefiting the town of Westboro and its residents. And one of the things that we, we really want to do is rec- hope that, together with the town, we can recognize the fifty years the Civic Club has existed. Um, you know, the fact that we put that amount of money back into town is great, but actually, it's your money, because you, people have been our wonderful, valued customers over those years, um, but we think we, uh, we, we do a pretty good job. And, and a lot of that is down to the stewardship over the past fifty years. It's not just down to Walter and myself. Um, so, one of the things I want to first of all mention is the fact that we aren't quite giving you the money tonight, um, because there's nothing to give it to currently. We don't have any funds set up or anything else. Uh, the second thing is that actually, I have to declare that our members haven't quite voted on this yet, but that's all part of the due process. We've set up a fifty thousand dollar budget to commemorate the Westboro Civic Club's fiftieth anniversary. We decide to define some goals for ourselves. The, uh, um, obviously, we want through this to increase club awareness, but more importantly, we want something that benefits many people. Uh, it needs to be, in our minds, a capital project that has longevity. Um, we want it to align, if possible, with other town initiatives and projects. We also want it to be timely. This is not about sort of, oh, we've got two or three years to do this. Uh, and let's face it, you know, if we have tariffs on Christmas trees, it may be game over. So I would take it whilst you can. Um, and so in all of that process, over many meetings at the Central House and House of Pizza, we must continue this. Um, we've thought about the community center. Can we do something there? The library, is it possible we can do something there? We've talked about Minuteman Park, and the various, many other things. You nearly actually got a clock on East Main Street. But when we heard about the land just outside town hall, uh, between here and the coop, we actually said to ourselves, well, that looks a bit boring, doesn't it? That really could be something that might benefit folks, you know? There's a lot of people move around downtown, spend their time downtown. It might be nice to have a little bit of beautification of an area right in the middle of town. And so, we identified that opportunity as soon as you folks, um, approved the easement, uh, of, of the land. We come to you tonight, um, we've taken a little bit of liberty. We sort of said to ourselves, what could be done with that area? So it happens that, um, one of our club members, his son is a, is a, a designer, some note, and he just has done a couple of concepts that it might look like. This is not us saying this is how it has to look. Obviously, there are many other groups involved, including the DPW, I suggest, and, and, and maybe, um, you know, other municipal departments. Um, but our membership at least has said, hey, let's approach the town. Let's explore an interest in creating that area, not necessarily to be called Civic Plaza, but we do have twenty-five signatures we can bring to your next meeting. I think that's the number you need, um, and recognition of the Civic Club. And we talked about, I talked about project alignment. We believe it does tick some of the boxes with the downtown improvement project, um, you know, promoting that mixed-use development and vibrant street life, the enhancing the walkability and pedestrian safety, and, and certainly expanding that outdoor space. So, you know, we, we're trying very hard here to say, hey, does this blend in with what we as a community want? Um, and so here we are. We have a, a, a photograph of, of as it is today. Um, we're all familiar with that. And before I go any further, though, I would like to mention something else that actually was ten years ago. And ten years ago, we were forty years old, and at that time, we actually said to ourselves, well, what can we do when we're forty? And some of you may remember the Top Lot at Bay State Commons, and I'd like to just read to you a very nice email I received this morning from the three folks who actually were the committee members for the Top Lot. That was Jennifer Strong, Erica Dubey, and Megan McDonald. I think you may know some of those folks. And I sort of quote from them, "As former leaders of the Westboro Top Lot Committee, we continue to be extremely grateful for the support of the Westboro Civic Club in helping us make the playground at the Commons a reality. The Civic Club's significant donation early in our fundraising process helped us to secure additional sponsors. In addition to its robust daily use, the playground enhances the atmosphere around and participation in local events at the Commons. The Civic Club played a foundational role in ensuring its existence. We recognize and appreciate their contribution to this project and look forward to their current vision becoming a reality." So, we're really taking what we did ten years ago and saying, well, what now can we do? And we, 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 we hope that, you know, enduring this, you understand. So here's sort of one, a very minimal design, you know, that just is putting in a couple of benches. Some of you may have known of us as the bench folks for a while. We seem to put a number of benches around town for various reasons. Sadly, many in memory of past members, the very members that helped raise this money. Um, so a minimal design, you know, just a couple of benches, some tables, and maybe a planter. Um, more, um, that could look something like this. But again, we appreciate that, um, DPW are a very strong player in this. Um, probably, they would want, we understand from preliminary discussions that I think, uh, George Grusner, our chairman, attended with Pete Allen, um, you know, items may need to be movable because of snow removal. Um, there may be, you know, need to be sort of positioning. There need to be consideration of any sort of utilities and facilities, et cetera. Um, but this is what it might look like. And just out of interest, to give you an example of our understanding of costs of things like pretty substantive benches and tables and so on, um, the sort of benches that we put around town that have lasted for many, many years, you know, come in at about two thousand dollars, um, trash cans at about two thousand dollars, tables at about four thousand dollars. It all adds up. But actually, when I looked at this and totted it up, it probably fifty K would do it. Um, so, that's what we're looking at. We, if the town, um, if you decide to, um, open a, a, a fund, um, then our members, um, if you feel comfortable that that is an area you would like to develop and that we can work together, uh, our members will be taking a vote, I guess, in September, which is the next time we meet, to make a donation towards that fund. Um, we had two or three questions, uh, which you probably have in your minds. Um, is it something that can be started and completed, um, you know, fairly soon? Uh, we'd like to celebrate our fiftieth anniversary this year, please. The Civic Plaza, we understand, you know, since we started thinking about this, the town has a new naming policy, um, but, uh, we'll try and do anything required to at least throw our hat in the ring, uh, you know, and hopefully, we could install just as at Bay State Commons, something that recognizes the, uh, the club's fifty years of support to the town and the community in general. Questions?
Great, open, open up to the board. I want to go first. Patrick?
Uh, sure. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. A, a, you know, wonderful organization, and, uh, it's a wonderful idea to, uh, to beautify that space. So thank you very much for you and your members, uh, for bringing this forward. Um, I guess a couple of questions. Uh, the first one, just in comment, uh, to the naming of the Civic Plaza, um, Kristi, this, my understanding is we have an easement on that property. The property isn't Westboro's property. It's an easement. Uh, is, actually, our?
Right, we, there was an exchange of easements, so, um, so we own the property.
We own the property, okay. So then, now we can do the naming. It is, it is Westboro Town property, okay. Um, um, okay, that actually, I don't have to answer my second question now, so, so thank you.
Well, I, I guess even if there's no formal lien, it could go down in folklore.
Sean, questions, comments?
Now, this sounds great. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Much appreciated. Um, I, I don't have any concerns with anything that you've presented. Um, I look forward to getting feedback from folks on potential design. Um, I like the drawings. I understand the second one is a little more robust, but maybe a little more difficult to, you know, keep clean and things of that nature and sweep. So, um, you know, folks will, will, um, talk about that a little bit and come up with what's best. Um, as far as I know, there is nothing, now that we own the property, there is nothing needed for us to start the project, right? Would, it would go before one stop, and?
Um, actually, we, when we met, um, previously with the Civic Club, we brought, uh, Public Works was also there, and so they're already looking into, um, types of benches or different materials. So, um, I guess we could say it's already started, um, in terms of doing that, um, research or understanding, um, you know, where we might go with it.
Great, Sheldon?
Yeah, thank you so much. A couple of questions. Uh, the first one is to, actually to Kristi. Um, is there potential savings, uh, quite honestly, to avoid procurement laws, um, requirements in pricing if they purchased everything?
We did discuss that, but that's not their interest.
Not their interest, okay, all right. Uh, that, that makes sense, too. That's another way to ask the question, I guess. Um, I'm curious, um, and you guys had this on the slide in our packet in terms of kind of rules and responsibility. What would the steps be around kind of design input? So these are two that you're presenting us.
The, the two are really merely just illustrative. Um, you know, that we're, certainly, we're not dictating, um, and I don't know whether DPW, uh, discussions between DPW, uh, town management, and, oh, maybe ourselves would come up with something, but I would hope that it's not going to eat into the money.
Right, right, right. We want to do this pretty quick. I guess, I'm wondering if there's a way, and it may just be forwarding this presentation to, um, like, the cultural council. I'm just thinking about other groups that might use this space, just to kind of say, hey, if you have any ideas, we'd love to get them. I mean, you guys have your own Facebook page. There may be people saying, hey, we, you know, we saw your presentation, and, and we have some ideas from the public, and that could, um, um, find its way to the process. Um, but I guess I'm wondering, should there be a member of this board just kind of working with DPW and the Civic Club to kind of come up with a final design?
I think that we would come back to the board with a final design. Um, the- The way that the motion is currently drafted is that it would be spent under the direction of the Town Manager. But if you wanted, you could change that to Select Board, and then before we purchase things, you would take a vote. We are talking, we already talked about engaging the Cultural Council, specifically about doing some public art. So I know that there are folks, there's staff working on that engagement in that particular space.
And it was just kind of one group. I mean, I know we don't want to go through a whole, I'm not suggesting a whole community survey, but I do think that this, we want the public to use it, right? So what we don't want is someone to say, well, why didn't you think of this, right? You know, no one asked, right? So I would, you know, even if there's a brief comment period or something, like we're asking for ideas, and maybe we could do an 01581 show. I don't know on this.
So I think that what we're contemplating right now with Public Works is how permanent the items would be. And so, given the need for snow removal and other things, trying to understand what would work best for, you know, just to maintain the plaza. And so I think that that would also sort of dictate how this moves forward. Because if you're putting in permanent fixtures as opposed to potentially movable or temp, not temporary that we would take them away, but the ones that we could move, that would probably be a different conversation. So I think more to come on...
Yeah. And I would just ask that there's some effort to kind of get the creativity beyond this, you know, 10-minute discussion to inform the process. So I'll leave that there. I would say, just from my own opinion on this, I like option two a whole lot more. It feels cozier. I like the seating that's available along West Main Street. I think that that's just a nice place for people to sit and watch traffic, or have lunch, or do just have a conversation. I do like that it appears both designs offer space for mobility. So for folks that might have a roll later or wheelchair, to be able to get on all sides. Love the idea of movable items, and definitely want to make sure we have a trash, you know, receptacle nearby. I know there's one a little bit further down from the coop, and I'm not sure where the other closest one is. So we're definitely going to need that because people will need to access that. And I guess from a maintenance perspective, so DPW will kind of choose, like, in terms of gardens and so on. It's going to be the responsibility of DPW to maintain that. Is that correct? Like, for beautification, or would this fall under the beautification project?
I think it depends on what we end up with, but I certainly expect that we would engage other community organizations like the Garden Club, if, you know, if they were interested in making that part of what they're, they maintain.
Okay. And I'm very supportive of a plaque. Obviously, we know with the naming policy, but the plaque is a great idea. So thank you so much.
Thanks. Mark?
So I don't have a lot to add to that, other than to thank you for all the work you do in town. It's much appreciated. Shelby asked a lot of my questions about specifics, but I think really the point of today is to set up the fund. And the final design will be hashed out in the near future. I just, I was hoping maybe you could celebrate your anniversary every five years instead of 10. And other than that, you know, I certainly would hope that you wait on the name, you know, design of that plaque. Well, I guess we'll be designing the plaque. So we'll wait on the design of that plaque until we have the proper name and the proper policy.
It's more to recognize the Civic Club than it is to worry about the name, but the Civic Plaza does have a pretty nice ring to it. And so finally, just potential next steps, I think we talked through really, is, you know, there's the vote to approve the, sort of, the setup a gift fund for the land adjacent to Town Hall, call it what you like. Our member, and obviously, if we can, some fairly speedy work on, on sort of anything that comes from DPW or other town organizations. Because we really would like to go back to our members and say, look, this, this looks to be really the frontrunner of everything. Much as we would have loved to have supported the community center, the senior center, the library, et cetera. This is up and going, and it's a really good way to bring something to the town. Anybody in town can use that area, and it doesn't matter who they are, where they come from. And it's up to us then to get our members to vote, and our treasurer, hopefully, to write a check.
I think my point on that was really just, you know, we do have a policy on naming, and we have to follow the policy, just the way we follow the alcohol policy. And I just want you to know that, you know, your generosity will be greatly appreciated, no matter what. What, that's...
It's our pleasure.
Yeah, I would just add, I mean, this is remarkable. I mean, what you do is remarkable, the amount you've given back, 1.2 million, give or take. I'm sure it's probably more than that. I mean, you are everywhere as a Civic Club, and I know the town appreciates it, all that you do. $50,000 is amazing. This is something I know we've talked about on a Select Board for many years as we tried hard to get this easement when we were doing Town Hall. And it's, you know, you're dealing with multiple business owners in downtown, and it was not easy. But we did come to that final agreement, which really allows this, something like this to happen. And I think, to me, it's a perfect spot. It, I'm glad you brought up how it fits into kind of downtown priorities there. I look forward to it, and I think that I would like, you know, hopefully with our vote, but also commit as a board and through the Town Manager and Town Staff, that we are committed to move this along quickly if your club approves it, based on us establishing a gift fund. And I think the three wishes, not to go over what everyone else said, but I think we would work very closely with you. I do like this. I mean, this is town project. You understand that. But I think collaboration makes sense. That was the right way to do things with the significant contribution you're making, that this would be a collaborative effort. It sounds like it's been that already, but that would be what we would hope would be brought back, that's something that the town and the Civic Club both are endorsing for kind of the final design and approval. So. Thank you. Very appreciated. So, yeah, we have a motion if you want to make it.
Yeah, so I would move to establish a gift account for the improvement and beautification of the alley located between Town Hall, 34 West Main Street, and 32 West Main Street, to be spent under the direction of the Town Manager.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will have the gift account established. Hopefully, the vote goes well.
Can I just ask?
Yeah, in general, it was hard for the group to vote absolutely. We're doing this because we hadn't talked to you yet. We didn't really know what you would come back or what the decision would be. So they, we voted in favor of the concept, so I'm pretty sure we'll get there. It was just, you know, it's nice to know what you're really voting for when you vote.
Yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Should it be the Civic Club gift account in the motion?
No.
No.
It's just a gift account that broadly, because if you had another donation for the area, then it could go into this account.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I didn't know if it had to be named. Thank you.
Actually, real quick question on that, just follow up. So if others can contribute to it, but we're trying to create a timeline, is there a timeline by which that account is also active or available to donate to?
It's available now that you've created it, so.
But there's no end date to close.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, there's no end date.
Because I can see this evolving, too. It's 50,000 to start, but there could be additions over time or modifications or replacements because things, and we'll need funding for that. So I think keeping the gift account open would be...
Right. Exactly.
Great. Okay, moving on to item six. This is for 20 Phillips Street, which is, as folks know, the site for the Metro West Regional Emergency Communications Center, or the Metro West REC. Tonight is kind of a three things on the agenda here, site plan review, I think a request to waive permit fees, and a butter agreement.
So actually, the butter agreement is not finalized, so we will put that on a future agenda.
Okay. Will that be discussed at all tonight, or discussed at a later meeting?
Only to the extent that we are working on the butter agreement. We have had discussions with the neighbor, specifically about screening the generator. And I think, or I know that we're in agreement that we want to do these things. It's just the specific language of the agreement that we need to finalize.
Perfect. Thank you.
Welcome. Good evening, Board. My name is Scott Borshay. I'm with Yale Associates. We are the civil site engineering subconsultant to the Galante Architectural Group, who is the lead on this project. Tonight, I'm here to make a follow-up presentation to the conversion of the 1883 Harvey School Building into a metro regional communication center located at 20 Phillips Street. As you may recall, in March of this past year, we made a presentation. And that presentation was really just an outline of our schematic site plan. Following that presentation, we also had another presentation with the zoning board of adjustments in April. The purpose of those two presentations was to solicit review comments from this board, and then also to receive a verbal acceptance or acceptance of the site layout. As you may be aware, the project is non-conforming. A lot of the developments would not meet any of the new town standards. And in order for us to make sure that we were not spinning our wheels, we didn't want to go through the entire design, just to have people come back and say, no, we don't like that. So based on those two presentations, we did receive a verbal pool of the site layout. We did receive review comments from this board. We also received review comments from the building commissioner, the conservation, the school department, fire chief, police chief, board of health, planning board, wastewater, and the act of transportation and safety committee. We've taken those review comments and incorporated into this plan set that we'll be presenting tonight. So with that stated, I'd just like to go through our plan set that has been recently filed with the ZBA through the site plan approval this past July. Currently, we are waiting for review comments from the town's engineer and/or their third-party review consultant. Once we receive review comments from them, we have one of three choices, which is, one, hopefully, it would be, everything's okay, we're good to go. And then at that point, we'd be immediately trying to get on the zoning boards next meeting to seek approval. If the minor, if we receive minor review comments, then we'd be doing, again, the same thing to try to get on the ZBA's next meeting to seek approval conditioned upon us addressing those minor comments. And then lastly, which I hope is not the case, if we receive a lot of review comments, well, then obviously we have to go through those review comments, address them, and then send them back to the town engineer for a re-review to make sure that we are in conformance with what the intent is. In front of you is the plan set that we did submit to and filed with the town. The first couple sheets are really just cover sheet, general notes, the existing conditions plan, and the demolition plan. Meat and potatoes really starts here on sheet C101, the site plan. Most of what you're seeing here is not much of a change from our last presentation. We are restoring or re-converting the existing school building into a regional communication center. The elevator here is still being presented here to elevate handicapped accessible folks from a lower elevation to the main floor. And then an addition is, in addition to that first addition or add-on, is the second one, which is stairs down to the basement. As you may recall, in the previous presentation, this site is being flanked by two parking spaces. On the planned left side is a reconstruction of the existing parking lot. This first half is meeting the town's development regulations, 24-foot travel lanes and nine-foot by 20-foot parking spaces, these five spaces here. But because of the building, the rear half is limited and restricted. So the travel lane has been reduced from 24 down to 22, and the parking spaces have been reduced from 20 down to 19 feet. Two handicap spaces are located all along this side of the building. And then per the Select Board's review comments and request, one of that handicap space is accessible for electronic, electronic EV charging. On the opposite side is a new parking space expansion. This entire parking area here does meet the town's development regulations. All parking spaces are nine feet by 20 feet with 20-foot parking space. And we have also included, per the board's request, two EV, two EV parking spaces here. In addition, we have also included a concrete pad with a rack to tie and secure bicycles to this facility. On the right-hand side, planned right, we have our dumpster, our transformer pad, and then our emergency generator. Moving on is our utility plan. Everything is underground, going from the existing utility poles here, wrapping around onto the right, planned right side to support the transformer pad, the emergency pad, and then access the rear of the building over here. The reason it's not going through the middle of the parking lot, you'll see in a couple sheets, is that's where our subsurface stormwater control system is. This is the grading and drainage plan. Everything has been designed so that our post-development conditions for runoff is meeting our pre-development conditions for the site, from the two-year up to the 100-year. Unfortunately, there is no on-street stormwater infrastructure, so everything is being controlled and managed onsite through infiltration. There are catch basins that are collecting the surface runoff and then directing that into these two subsurface chambers here, and then here to manage the stormwater, post-development stormwater conditions. An illumination plan has been developed that shows that we are meeting the town's illumination regulations at the property lines. And a landscape plan has been developed to try to soften up the site. In addition to softening up the site along these areas, along the front, we have also are proposing vegetation for this rear butter and rebuilding this rear retaining wall to help protect from visual and noise and fume pollutants from this emergency generator. The whole side, sides and back will incorporate a white PVC stocking fence to try to buffer the butters from the activity of this facility. And then after that is nothing but standard civil details that I assume are the town's engineer will be going through and reviewing and commenting on. With that stated, I open up to any questions that the board may have.
Great. Thank you very much. Look to the board for any questions.
Sure, sure. I think I just have one. That left-side parking lot, I'm just curious, right now, that left-side parking lot is very steep. Does the plan plan to level that, or at least mitigate that steepness of elevation?
Right here?
Yeah, that, from the left, very left edge to the building.
Yes.
Probably like a three-foot gain in height.
There is a significant drop from this corner up to the street. All along here, a pre-cast concrete retaining wall will be constructed to elevate it, so that we're meeting ADA standards. And then on top of that, understanding that that raising of that finished grade elevation is going to be putting car headlights directly into the butters' home and windows. That was the, basically, the primary reason of encapsulating all three sides of this facility with a white picket fence to not only mitigate activities, noise, but light and everything else that's going on with the site, and try to make sure we're not impacting the butters.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Sean, any questions, comments?
No, none. Thank you very much.
Shelby?
Yeah, just a couple. So on the design, the landscape design, could you go to that side?
Yeah.
What is along the front? Those little circles, big circles and little circles?
Fourth, Winterberry.
Are they?
I think it's...
Oh, I missed the key.
So along the front, we have a lot of... And bear with me, because I am not a landscape person. I like my concrete.
So it's a type of vegetation. That's okay.
Type of vegetation, low profile, just to soften up the entrance of the building. Type of vegetation, low profile, just to soften up the entrance of the building.
Okay. Yeah, my only comment there, just, it's a heavily walked area, just that it's setback far enough so that, you know, growth doesn't come onto the sidewalk just for planning purposes, once they're actually mature. So, I would just kind of note that. And then, the vegetation on the left side, so, there's only three, looks like, three trees being proposed for the back, but nothing kind of further along the property line. Is that a correct assumption?
Four vegetations, yes, four trees are proposed over there.
I mean, it seems, it seems kind of lopsided to me. Maybe I'm...
Actually, those don't look like those are on the property.
Oh, they...
The center of the circle, no.
No, the, on the left-hand side, those three towards the back.
Those are not on our property. I'm sorry, those are the...
These back here?
Nope.
Other side, your other side, sorry.
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Those are not on our property. They are not proposed to be demolitions. They are not our trees to touch.
So, basically, there's no vegetation along that?
There is no vegetation on that line. Unfortunately, as much as we'd love to balance out and put vegetation there, the parking lot is right up against that retaining wall. And the retaining wall, the first course, is right on that property line, and we're building up from there.
And there'll be a fence.
And there will be a fence on top of that, another six or eight foot up there.
And there's no vegetation there today. It hasn't been vegetationized.
That is correct.
It's just a chameling fence there.
Thanks, I wasn't reading the property lines correctly. And I guess the engineers have determined that on the left side, where we're still talking about, there's enough room even with a solid fence to back out so that someone's not going to take that fence out?
So, back here, what we have proposed, that really, it's compact vehicles that can be allowed back there. Your Priuses, your Honda CRVs. My Ford 150 is not going back there.
Okay. And so, so to that end, will there be signage forward of it?
Yes.
Maybe I missed that.
Right along here and here, along with the pavement markings here, we're proposing two signs that says, "Compact vehicles only," and "Handicap spaces only" from that point on itself.
Okay.
Hopefully, someone with a large vehicle will not be trying to...
And again, it's, these are going to be people that are using this building all the time. They're going to understand that it's not like for general, general public parking. To that end, will there be signs that's, "Authorized vehicles only" at the front? On both sides, it looks like there is.
That is correct.
Okay. I would encourage clearer language that says, "No public parking." Not just "Authorized vehicles only," because that could be like authorized to enter. I think, I think being very clear.
We can either try to add a sign there or replace it, but we'll look at that.
Or something.
Because the last thing we want is sign pollution that...
Yeah.
After three words, people stop reading.
Right, right, right. I don't know, I just...
No, make it simple. I get it. Fair enough.
Yeah, could be just, "Don't turn." Okay. I think that's all. I mean, my biggest concern with this, and we've already discussed it, and I know it's under discussion, is the generator pad and the noise on that side. Understanding the generator isn't generally running the whole time, but just really making sure we are 1,000% comfortable that that generator at a commercial size is going to be buffered as much as possible.
We are doing the best we can to buffer between landscaping on the other side, which really, I can, I can see someone saying it's more of just a visual aspects of it, but between the landscaping, the stockade fence, and then the information that we have received from our MVPs, inside this area, we, which is just barely crossing the property boundary lines, we're expected to hear about 71 DBAs. And 71 is around, looking at the table, through normal conversation that we're hearing right here. So, we are hopeful that we are not impacting that abutter, and we're doing everything we can to...
Yeah, and I know it's been made clear, you guys are, you've heard it from multiple angles as well as the abutters, so. We hope that's true. No other comments. Thanks.
Mark?
Yeah, I mean, I think the site works, and I think you've addressed most of our questions. I'm a little frustrated by the handicap parking being in the compact car-only parking because a lot of handicapped vehicles are not compact cars by design. But you do have two other spaces. I'm just curious how those two other spaces have access to the elevators or handicapped entrances? Do they have to go around the building?
So, with regards to the handicap design, we did take pains to look at this as to where we put it, how we do this. And in laying out this side of the parking lot, we started with locating the access aisle here so that it's centered along the access door to the elevator so that someone's not having to do this weird funky jig-jack to get through. And then from there, we worked both sides for the handicap. We do understand that most folks are having a little bit larger vehicle in handicap, and we're hoping that through this five-foot width here, this eight-foot access aisle here, they will have room to get in and out of that site. We do understand it's challenging, but we're hoping that we made enough provisions to make it easier for them. Any other place that we could put it, put some farther away from that elevator, especially during the winter months. So, it was a consideration that we did look at, and it was something that we tried to weigh out the best we can.
I think that's the only, I mean, it's a tight site. I think they've done a pretty good job, if not great job, of, you know, addressing all of our concerns from the last meeting, so. I think it's time to move it forward.
Okay. I just had two quick questions. I think, one, I'm assuming, because you didn't talk about it, that the elevator, I mean, you talked a little bit about it, nothing's changed in terms of what was presented before, in terms of design, whereas I know there were some comments or questions on that. I think you said this was, no, I didn't remember it, but the stairway in the back, is that, was that there the last time?
That was there last time.
Okay, but that is an addition to the, that'll be an addition to the building.
Yeah.
But that's all interior stairway?
No, that is an exterior stairway going down into the basement.
Okay.
I am not aware at this time if it may be covered with a roof to protect it during the winter months or during rain event, but my understanding is it is an exterior stairway down to the basement.
Okay. Is that a second or is that the only access into the basement? Is there an interior one as well?
I believe there is interior access.
Okay. I thought there was, but yeah, just want to check. Now, I agree with others. I mean, I think we've gone through this. I think you've done what you can. It's a tight, tight spot, but I don't have any other, any other comments there.
Oh, my only, my only other comment was on snow removal. You just had that slide up. It was just our snow storage. Again, it is what it is, but those locations right in the front there, I just think we're going to have to be mindful of line of sight, people pulling out.
So, the purpose of the, of the snow storage here is really for during the storm events, snow events, so that the maintenance crew can come in, plow forward, plow over, plow forward, plow over, just to get the site cleared, and then after the storm event, they're going to have to move it off. It's starting to become, based on our experience, more and more of a standard of the snow is now not permanently onsite anymore. It's just there temporary during the snow storms of our sites. Based on our experience, they're getting smaller and smaller, and you just can't, we need storage, and that's where it is all winter long. The person under contract will have to remove that within 24, 48 hours.
Kind of like our downtown.
Yeah.
Great. So, I do think we had two motions. One was site plan review. I think we've gone through that. The other one, I do think there's, Chris, I don't know if you want to hit this as a request to waive permit fees associated with development. Is that correct?
Yeah, so just to clarify, the, the fees are typically waived for municipal projects, so building permit, things like that, when we do Westboro projects. But this is obviously a project of the district, of which we are a part. The district has already paid the permitting fees for the zoning board of appeals and moved forward with that, so this would really be, you know, building, electrical, plumbing, those types of fees. So, the motion probably really should be amended to say, "All permitting fees under the select board's control," meaning that if they're, for some reason, they needed to pay a fee to conservation or anything, something like that, that would be up to that board.
Great. And I think as noted in our thing, this, while it is a regional center, the building itself does remain as a town building.
Correct.
So, kind of to me, falls under our policy for town building, so. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the waiving of all permitting fees under select board control associated with the development of the Metro West Regional Emergency Communication Center at the 20 Phillips Street location.
Is there a second? Moving second. Any further comments? All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Great.
Thank you.
I think that is it. Thank you. Good luck.
I'm sorry, are we not moving the abutter agreement?
Correct, that's going to come to another later.
It is, I missed that.
Yep.
Yes. I'm Charlie Ronaldini, I'm the abutter.
Yep.
So, I was just wondering, she got the abutters list, the abutters agreement yesterday. And I'm real happy that he's talking about the generator. We are talking about the generator, which is my big concern. Is it all right with you that I talk to him about the abutters agreement? Am I on the line?
He's... Yeah, I mean, so he's, you know, he's not a, so he's not a party to the agreement, but we would certainly be working with him on it, so. I mean, I think we can continue to have a conversation. I think it's appropriate if we all talk together, but ultimately, it's, you know, whatever is approved by the board, which you know.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea is, you know, yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I think it would be helpful to have your input, I think through our town manager, correct?
Yeah, so, we got the, yes. And I think we're very clear on what Mr. Ronaldini is looking for because he's, he's sent a revised agreement to me, so.
Okay.
But we can all work together on that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, please continue, and then...
And thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming, and, you know, it's our goal to make this work in this location, and that'll be in front of us once it's ready to be approved. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. And I think for my site plan, I don't hear any...
I just had clear language on the signs for "No public parking," and then also just reiterating the board's concern about the generator's noise and buffering and screening.
Yep. And I think the one other one was the plantings up front, just to ensure they're placed back enough that doesn't...
At maturity, so they don't have to be...
Yeah.
Sick-like.
Because they impede on the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is item seven, which is a sign policy. Do I introduce this?
Sure. So, earlier in the spring, we, the board had asked that we discuss a sign policy. We talked about a little bit of the retreat as well. So, this summer, we were lucky enough to get Ronald as an intern in our office, and so one of his tasks was to look at what other communities have for sign policies and put together a draft. He is going to discuss sort of the process that he went through and how he got to the document that's in front of you.
Good evening. My name is Ronald Reins, 5 Armstrong Drive, and I served as an intern with the town manager's office in late May into around mid-June. I am currently interning with Super Ten Boachers at the school department, so kind of going around to different locations throughout the local town government. As a political science major at Whedon College, Massachusetts, as part of these summer internships are part of my major program to kind of work in prospective work environments and different things like that. So, I've been very grateful for these opportunities to work in the town manager's office, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
During my time interning at the town manager's office, I was assigned to create a new sign policy for Westboro. This was due to the fact that previously, Westboro did not have a policy that gave official guidance to residents on the display of temporary signs on town property. Signs had been allowed to be displayed at Ward's Corner, which is Route 30 across from the Lutheran Church. But there was no clear organization for the process of town residents who wanted to display a sign. So, this new sign policy covers exclusively temporary signs that are displayed by residents. This new policy does not address permanent signs of any type. This new sign policy places every rule and regulation on town residents' placement of temporary signs into one policy that should keep the process of the display of temporary signs organized and clear to the residents of Westboro. The process of creating this sign policy involved researching other local municipality's sign policies and consulting with town departments such as Community Development Director Fred Leonardo. The main objectives that are fulfilled in this policy is maintaining organization, safety, and also preserving, and also preventing sign blight and preserving the historic look and culture of the town. Organization involves time allowed for a sign to be displayed, permitted sign dimensions, and locations that signs are permitted. Safety involves making sure that no signs distract motorists, and also do not project any language or imagery that would be deemed harmful to any residents. Ward's Corner and now also Haskell Recreation Area do not require permission for the display of temporary signs, as long as they comply with the new policy. Every other town-owned property requires permission, so this also includes a new sign request form that must be filled out physically and turned into the town hall, either in person or by mail, for approval to be granted. So, thank you very much, and we hope that this new sign policy and its process for displaying temporary signs gives more guidance to this process. We're also giving residents more opportunity to display events that contribute to the community.
Great. Ronald, thank you very much. Any questions for Ronald, not... Or comments?
Yeah, I do. So, thank you very much for this work. I, I have some concern with just the logistics under Section 6. So, the intent for the public's benefit is basically kind of signs permitted without town approval needed, and it starts with talking about maintaining this orderly space at Ward's Corner and Haskell Recreation. And it basically says, "Hey, we're going to allow 10 individual temporary signs. If you want to place a sign at one of these two locations, please check, like being conscientious, that there are not more than 10 signs already there. And be aware, if your sign at following locations do not comply, it could be subject to removal." So, that last part is fine, because, you know, it's based on sign and language and all that. I just, intent is great, but I feel like, I don't know, I, I, how are we going to enforce it? Whose sign was there first? We're going to have to put, someone put a date, like, "My sign was here on this date." I, I feel like maybe that language... I'm just not sure that we need it. I understand the intent, and I like it for that reason, but I, I would just, I would actually just have that say, basically, "Be aware, if your sign at the following locations does not comply, it should be subject to removal," so that would be the one thing. The other thing...
Sorry, just wanted to say, just say, take out the, please check to make sure there are...
Yeah, that whole, you know, I mean, we could have a statement there that's basically, "To maintain an orderly space, we ask that, you know, one sign per event be there. You know, be considerate of, you know, others." Don't, and don't move signs, and that was the other thing, like, don't move someone else's sign to like...
Yeah, if I can, Mr. Chair, I'd like to maybe add on to Shelby's part of this conversation. My concern is the 10 signs. I think Ward's Corner and Haskell Street in particular are very challenging driving areas, and if you're putting signs up there advertising town events, you're going to have people who are, you know, rubbernecking as they're trying to take the turn to read the latest sign. My suggestion to eliminate what you're describing, Shelby, is to limit it to one sign at a time. Do we need to have, do we need to fill up, and not only from the safety perspective, I'm also worried about the... need to fill up, and not only from the safety perspective, I'm also worried about the perception of 10 very distinctively, likely distinctively different signs not being very appealing. You know, it's ugly in that area.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Patrick. I guess for me, it's like, let's say the fishing derby is one thing, and then the cultural council's having another, and the Westboro Connects is having something else. You know, to me, we're still a pretty small town. Residents should be able, go ahead, those are good examples, right? This isn't just like, this is not like I'm having a yard sale sign. I can't do that. That's under a specific permitted process, right?
Right. Well, so currently, I just wanted to, as Ronald said, currently, folks put their signs at Ward's Corner with no requirements.
Yep. And I don't think it, I mean, my sense is it's not abused, and, you know, I don't know, I just think, I don't think we need to police it. I know usually I'm like the rules and regs person. I know it's shocking, but if it gets to be an issue, we can take a look at the policy and say, oh, you know, we have sign clutter. I just, I think that it's like, be aware that this is the requirement. Now, the part that I do have a concern with is the time allowed for a sign to be displayed, specifically around kind of election time. It says, Section 2 says, displayed up for 10 days before the day of the event and removed more than two days after the event, presumably the election. So the two days is fine. The 10 days before, I know that typically folks are putting out election signs a lot sooner than 10 days, and, you know, we could always use more voter turnout.
I think there's actually a policy around that, how soon...
Well, and that's what I was looking for. I thought that the town clerk had it in a handbook at one point, so that would be the only thing I'd want to check, because I thought you could put like, 30 days before an election...
30, 60, something like that, yeah.
Or something like that.
I didn't think we could put...
This is on town property?
Candidate signs couldn't go on town property. You can hold them, but you can't put a candidate sign on town property.
Oh, good point, good point. My mistake.
So there's a rule about putting it to private property.
I think that's a state rule, isn't it?
Yeah.
You know what, my mistake. Sorry, thank you.
So I think this still says you can't put candidate signs. It does say that, like we have at the road or other places, you can hold them.
You can hold them and all this, so, okay. So then the 10 days before the event and two days after, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that. But I just think that that language is, I just, we don't need it. I have a follow-on question, but I'd love to hear the comments.
Go ahead.
No, 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 it's, I can, I can go after.
Ronald, thank you. Welcome to town government.
[laughing]
I think it was our naming policy took how many meetings?
He was present at a few of them, yeah.
At least three, so...
His internship was over before my final...
It's the naming policy. Thank you for all your research on this, you know, determining all the sites where this could be located, you know, quoting mass general law where appropriate throughout this. I appreciate all the research you've done here. This was a terrific job. And nothing survives the select board in its first draft, so. I think, I think there is also, I don't think, we're probably going to vote on this tonight, I think there's also a general conversation we need to have when it comes to signs about, are we then in charge of determining what is or isn't appropriate? And then that becomes us kind of making decisions as to, you know, what we consider to be obscene, or what we, you know, and essentially making freedom of speech or whatever decisions for individuals, you know, within us here, which I think is going to open us up to potential concerns, right, if we have to make those decisions. So, I like, really like what you've put together here. I guess the question is, you know, at the, at the upper level is, are we better off having a sign policy or not? And, and I don't know if we have enough time for that tonight. So, but I just, I just sort of put that out there. But, thank you. Thank you for efforts on this. Well done.
Yeah, I guess I'll have a follow-up, because the question to that, so, just so I make sure I understand, right now, this, the way this policy is written, it basically allows anybody to put, as long as it follows this policy, it allows anybody in town, individuals, whatever, to put signs on town property. Is that accurate?
Well, yeah, I mean, they would go through the process, but...
Right. But anybody could go, so.
Anybody could ask.
Anybody could ask. So it is a broad policy. You know, I think a piece that discusses, would we, do we want it that broad? Do we want to limit it? Could it be that it's for town, or nonprofits, or whatever? I think I'd like to have a more discussion with the board, too. I kind of echo what you said, I'm not sure I'm ready to approve it tonight without comments, but that's just something that I would think would want to talk about. Mark?
All right. So I have a few things on this. First of all, I had similar concerns with Section 6, and I know that historically Ward's Corner has been, signs are allowed. But my problem, my fear, right, is when you start allowing some people, organizations, whatever, to post signs without permission. At what point do you draw that line if somebody wanted to post a sign with a swastika? I personally would have a problem with that, but there's a free speech argument, right? And as a, as public property, do we have the ability to limit free speech? And that scares me, that, you know, we would potentially have to allow something like that or face a lawsuit. I would prefer to see that everybody come to, to, for permission, that the only people, organizations allowed would be semi-public, whether they be committees like Sustainable Westboro, or, I mean, I guess, yeah, again, I don't really know what that cutoff would be. I would like to see that discussed and determined. I wanted to make sure, and I asked this question earlier of town manager, that, you know, protests like we've been seeing on the Rotary are still going to be allowed, because I think that, you know, that's important, that people don't feel like we're inhibiting their ability to express their advocacy for a position. And then my final point is, once we've rehashed this and kind of gotten to a final version of this, if we do move forward with the policy, and I do think a policy might be good, because without a policy, I'm, I'm back to that fear that somebody will put up a sign and sue us because we told them to, to take it down. I would like to see that final draft publicized in some way. I, I know historically that hasn't been done, but in the interest of getting the information out to the public, giving them a chance to comment on that draft policy before we make that final vote, I think we have some pretty informed citizens that may see something that we don't. And that's, well, that may lead to nothing. You know, hopefully we find all the problems and iron it out ourselves. I don't think it hurts to put a draft policy out and say, you know, you have a two-week period to, to comment.
Can I just say, this has been reviewed by town council in terms of identifying problems, so you have, actually, you have that in your pocket.
Yes, Patrick.
So, Ronald, yeah, I echo the board. Thank you very much for your work on this. It's a very difficult topic to create because of, to document because of the free speech issues that Mark raised. So, I give you a lot of credit for trying to tackle this and make heads or tails of it. I am inclined to lean towards not having a policy on this at all because of the complexities that it can introduce to the community. Mark, you mentioned a swastika. Swastika is actually legally defined as hate speech, so that actually wouldn't be allowed. But nonetheless, if I'm reading this policy as it's currently derived, there's only one part of this, and that is on the Rotary, that has any process to it. The rest of it is, you can go out and put your own sign, right? So there's no oversight by us as to what sign can be published. So if the, if the Sustainable Westboro wanted to put a EV car show sign up someplace like they do every year, they come, and they wanted to put one at Ward's Corner, they wouldn't have to do that anymore. They would just go, put it there. And that's fine. But if somebody else put up a sign for, I don't know, some other reason, you know, would never come before us to, for us to see it and make sure it's something that is correct or valid.
Just at Ward's Corner and Haskell.
Yeah, isn't that already what happens?
I don't think there's a process anywhere. In this policy as written, there's only one section that talks about any sort of process, and that is specific to the Rotary.
I think five, Section 5.
I know, five, there's all those other locations.
So, just also currently the...
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that italicized section. Okay, yep. So, okay, that, that makes me feel better about it now, but I do have some questions here in regards to just the way that this is laid out. So, is this, is the intent of this to supersede the Rotary sign policy with this?
It's incorporated in here.
I noticed that quite a bit of it was incorporated into it, so we would...
Yeah, it's, it's incorporated in its entirety, but it's just in multiple sections.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would something as simple as saying, welcome to Westboro, be permitted under this policy?
No. So the, beginning of the policy specifically states that it has to be advertising an event.
Okay. And then on that note, when we talk about advertising, I read Section 7D, which I think conflicts with the initial purpose of the document, which says, signs are not advertising an event and/or signs advertising an event outside of Westboro will not be permitted on public property, whereas the actual opening purpose statement talks about, it needs to be an advertisement, so.
Where do you see the, the conflict with the opening part?
So at the beginning, in the first paragraph, it says, signs not advertising an event and/or signs advertising an event outside of Westboro will not be permitted on public property. You go to 7D, and it specifically says, advertisements, examples such as phone numbers, websites, and other contact information are prohibited. So it just, it's a conflict of the word advertisement.
So 7D needs to be clarified, yep, yep, good catch.
So just, just something that I would try to...
Further clarify what advertisement is.
Yeah. Should we talk about Ward's Corner?
Yeah, because I read that one to be like, roofing service or...
I get the nuance. I'm just, I'm just saying it could be easily misinterpreted.
Makes sense.
We had a lot of discussion during the Rotary sign meeting about planting of signs, literally poking the hole in the ground, and we, we decided at that point that we were not going to allow that. So I, I'm just throwing it out to the board whether or not we would expect people to be able to, and these are changes or modifications that I think would be looked to be adopted based on our comments, as to whether or not we would allow a post to be put in. And then on that note, I'm a little confused on the physics here, or the geometry. How do you post a three or four-foot tall sign with a one-foot post? It says in here, there's only, only allow a one-foot post. We're allowed to have up to a three-foot taller sign. So I would try to figure out how that would, would work. I would suggest that we not allow signs to be poked into the ground. The drawback to that is, windy days, as all of us who've ran for office have put signs out there, they're going to blow, right? So then do you come up with the A-boards, or are those things are called?
TP, like...
Yeah, you know, yeah. Do we have to be more specific about the type of signs? Do they have to be weighted in that case, if we were to go down that path? These are all just questions I have in my mind, that I think as we revise this, if we so move forward to creating a policy, we need, I think we need to think about. And, yeah, that was all my comments, so.
Okay. Well, it sounds like, we're not going to vote on this tonight. It sounds like we should take it back, review it, and we can place this on a future agenda for discussion. So what I would say is...
Did Sean have something?
No, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
Let's move forward. We're half an hour behind schedule.
Yep.
Yeah. This is great. Thank you so much for putting it all together. I think we would never get this far, so this was great that you did this. I think I would suggest next steps is we take this back, provide comments back in through the town manager, and, and then I will work with the town manager to set this on that upcoming agenda for further discussion.
Can I, can I ask just a general question about signs around town? Just, this is more, this is my follow-on question. So, if, I know that there was a reference to you can't put a sign like on a telephone pole or on a tree. What is the, from an operational perspective, what is the town's lens? Because I see signs, like staked in the ground, not in front of someone's property, like where someone just did tree work, but it's randomly like on Route 30. Do we have sort of a culture within our town departments, like, hey, if you see a sign like that, pull over, stop and pull it and pick it up? Because I would love to see that happen. Or something that's nailed to a telephone pole, take it down. But to me, that's like a cultural thing, and like, and we want to empower our town departments and staff to do that.
Yeah, so our police department has pulled signs. I know that some of our inspectors pull signs. I, myself, have pulled signs that's on public property, not supposed to be there, so, so that does happen. Obviously, we don't catch all of them, but yeah.
Okay, great. It's good to know that that is, that is encouraged. Thanks.
Great.
Thanks, Ronald.
Thank you so much. Enjoy your rest of time here, too.
Oh.
Hi.
My name is Linda Janinski, and I live at 2 Old North Street, and I'm here personally because of the signs.
Uh, could you?
Oh, no.
You have to.
Typically, I mean, just, if you could just, I mean, it's not a public hearing, so typically, then I think you have something, but, you know, I guess I'll recognize you for comment, but...
Okay, I'm just looking for where I can find guidance for what the rules are. I, myself, am trying to promote a Westboro pet food pantry, and I would like to put out an announcement to the town people and let them know about it, because it's a public service. But I don't know where to start to find out if it's allowable or not allowable, where it's allowed. I don't know where to go.
You can, we can discuss it. I'm the town manager, so I can, you can reach out to our office.
Okay.
We can talk about it.
Is there anything online? I mean, you were talking about a policy.
That's, that's really where this discussion came from.
Yeah.
But there are some locations where it's, it's currently allowed.
Okay.
Anything further which we can discuss would have to come back to this board for approval.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
And I did see that, I did see that she had asked privately, and she already has a lot of folks saying, you can put one on my lawn, kind of thing, so, which is great, so.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. I know we're delayed here, but apologies for that, but item eight, downtown plan presentation. Thank you for being patient with us. Kristi, anything you want to kick off at all while they're setting up?
Sure. So, I know the board is aware that we've been working, we, the downtown plan was completed last year and was presented to you in a joint meeting with the planning board. That was just about a year ago. I know several of you have participated in the many community engagement sessions, looking at the downtown improvement project, which is really specific to the Rotary improvements. And so this is your opportunity to give some feedback. There's, there's lots of ways that the public has provided feedback, but this board, as a board, has not yet provided feedback on either the details of the plan or just sort of the, the concept going forward.
Great.
Can I ask a clarifying question on this? This is our opportunity, and maybe the timeline is going to be presented. I, I did read the packet, but what does that, what does that mean in terms of, maybe, maybe you're going to answer that in terms of the timeline of next steps?
I believe you'll answer that, but also I think, I think that there's, this is an opportunity for broader discussion about what the board is hoping to see as next steps in order to give feedback to the director of planning and the consultants.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll definitely touch on the next steps in the presentation. So, thank you all for having us here today. I'm Jenny Jingeris, I'm the director of planning, and I'm also here with Bill Scully and Lisa Wong with Kimley Horn Engineering, who are our consultants for this project. So, I'll go ahead and get started. So, for tonight's presentation... So for tonight's presentation, we're going to continue the conversation about the downtown improvement project, and then I'll start with a brief overview before I hand things off to our consulting team. Tonight's presentation is going to focus on the infrastructure, so the roads, sidewalks, crosswalks, and essentially how people are moving through downtown. This won't be a zoning conversation tonight. The land use and zoning will happen in a separate discussion. We'll then, we'll begin with a project update and a review of the downtown goals as well, and then from there, we'll walk through the current transportation conditions, share what we've learned from the public, and then discuss the design challenges that we're facing, and then preview the concepts that are still a work in progress. Most importantly, I just wanna note that this isn't a final design, it's an ongoing process that's shaped by public input that we've been going through and technical analysis, and we're looking to continue that process with this meeting tonight. So as you know, the downtown has long been identified as a key priority for Westboro. It was emphasized in our master plan, in our strategic plan, and then featured in multiple planning efforts going back decades. So you see a few photos of, of the plans that we've gone through up on the screen. Throughout those plans, the message has been pretty consistent. Downtown is the heart of our community, and we've known that for a long time that it's time for a reinvestment. Most recently, in 2024, we did a downtown plan that was created to build on all that work, and also included a focus on infrastructure amongst other things, such as zoning and economic development. So again, how people are moving through downtown as drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists. So with all of these planning efforts being done, maybe the question shouldn't be, why now? It's how do we take the next step now that we've done all of these planning efforts? We're picking up where these past efforts have left off, and then carrying forward that community feedback that we've received, knowing that we want to make downtown safer, more accessible, and more vibrant for the future. So you see up on the screen, and I noticed it was on the earlier presentation as well, which is great. These are goals that reflect what we've heard from the community in the downtown plan that was done in, in 2024. So they're what was recommended in the recent planning documents. People want to see more mixed-use development and vibrant street life that brings energy downtown. They want more options, more places to eat, shop, gather. And then walkability and pedestrian safety are definitely at the heart of this plan, which we'll be talking about. We've heard multiple times that crossing the Rotary feels unsafe, driving in the Rotary feels unsafe. Even businesses report that there's daily near misses and confusion when people are going in the Rotary. We've also heard a strong desire for more public outdoor spaces, so places to sit, meet up, or just enjoy the downtown. And importantly, of course, residents want us to preserve the history and the character of downtown. The 2024 downtown plan included an evaluation of different concepts, as you know, for the Rotary and the connecting downtown areas. The concept of the traffic triangle, or the triangle concept, as it's been called, with signalized intersections had come forward as the leading idea last year based on the public feedback that we did in 2024, and then technical data analysis. It was intended to respond directly to community priorities that I've mentioned, improving safety, walkability, and maintaining the green center space. Recently, we've taken a deeper dive into that data and continued to gather input, and we've definitely heard a wide range of opinions, which is, which is great. We've had a lot of feedback so far. We've heard from residents, business owners, visitors, and then in addition to the online comment form that you all have seen in the recent public meeting that we had input from, we've walked the downtown area. So my staff and then Economic Development Committee ambassadors have walked the downtown area. We've talked to residents, we've talked to business and property owners, or just people passing through to ask them what they think about downtown, what their opinion is, what they value. And then recently, last week, we went to the farmer's market, and we set up a table, and we asked for input as well at, at that time. So we continued this effort, we plan to attend more farmer's market. We're preparing a survey to send out to businesses to get a more in-depth look at their feedback, and then talk to other stakeholder groups as well. So overall, I just want to emphasize that we're trying to strike a balance, honoring what works while making meaningful improvements that will benefit everyone who uses the space. So again, tonight's presentation isn't a final design, it's a work in progress. We're here to provide an update, share what we've learned, and then show how community input continues to shape the direction of this project. And then at the end, hear your thoughts, what you feel the priorities are, and what you think about the design. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jenny. As Jenny alluded to, we had a, we have a lot of public input. These are just some samplings, just some quick highlights. A lot of folks want to have connections on pedestrian facilities. This is including sidewalks, crosswalks, pedestrian signal as well. Connecting the Rotary to the Bay State Green is an important emphasis. Having safe, accommodated bike lanes, some people love the bike lanes idea, some people are saying maybe not. As Jenny was alluding, it's like 50/50%. Some people will love to leave the Rotary as-is. Some people love the reconstruction of a traffic signal, but they do have some weary of delay, the queuing. So there are definitely concerns on both spectrums from a Rotary and a traffic signal. The next slide is just in addition to some public input sampling, but in general, a lot of people love, will love an idea of a public open space where students, kids, young adults can corral, have a space to go to, especially after school, just to make sure that there is a space for them. As Jenny alluded to, is that the current conditions are not as safe for pedestrians and cyclists, and then she also mentioned the motor vehicles as well. Some comments did support the reconstruction of this project, as well as rezoning as well. And then what was so awesome, like a couple of agenda items before, is just, other than connecting to the Bay State Green, there could be a connection to the Civic Plaza. There's just a lot of connectivity other than retail, there's just public spaces as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kristi. So the last time I think I was here before this board was when we were discussing complete streets, and the board ended up adopting the complete streets policy. So that was a few years back, but, but it's nice to be back. The, in the complete streets plan, we did have the downtown area listed, but even at that point, we recognized it needed more analysis and evaluation. It wasn't just pick one thing and, and do it. The downtown plan that Jenny talked about over '23 and '24 was a major step in that direction to examine much broader downtown, but also look at the infrastructure and the, and the accessibility within, within that area. Since the public information meeting in June, which I was amazed, it was a great, I, I couldn't believe over 130 people came, exchanged an awful lot of information, and we thought it was very positive, regardless of, you know, whether one view or another view. And even since then, I mean, we've had, it's probably hundred, over a hundred comments, I think, coming in, questions coming in. So where we, when we left the public meeting and then have been looking at these comments and questions, we, we really felt that, okay, the, the project isn't ready to take from the downtown plan and go right into design. Let's take a step back, let's collect more data, do more analysis. Let's, let's answer some of these questions, you know, people saying, well, why can't we just keep the circle? I think, I think in the end of everything, we all agree, we, we've known there's been problems out there since the early 80s. It's just, traffic's fast, it's wide area, really hard to walk, and it's really confusing even to drive. So we've gotten, and we've gotten that input from, from everyone. But we wanted to answer that question of, okay, well, what can work, what, what doesn't work? So we've been, I think we touched on some of this, certainly at the public meeting, collected an awful lot of information that's listed on the slide, reviewed a lot of things, but been out in the center just watching, seeing what's happening activity-wise. We summarized from previous studies, our analysis and observations, working closely with the planning staff, a number of, a number of key issues. And we've listed them on the, this slide and the next slide. Certainly motors confusion and indecision was a major one. No bicycle accommodation keeps coming up in the downtown from both past and current studies. You know, we, we see the, quote, "Rotary's problem is both functional and aesthetic." There was a call to redesign the Rotary, as, as Jenny alluded to in the downtown plan, to go with that triangle concept with the traffic signal. And then, and lastly, some of the crash data, 236 crashes between 18 and 23 in the Rotary, three with cyclists, seven with pedestrians, 22 with parked motor vehicles in and around, not just right in the Rotary, but right around the, the environment. So as I said, we, we took a step back, and it's, I find it, it's, it's kind of, let's see. It's, it's great, we all know there's been a problem, it's been there since the 80s, and we've looked at it, and, and, and we have solved it. And on this slide, we list a number of challenges. And, you know, we, we're in a tight area, there's only so much right-of-way, public right-of-way out there. Two major roads, Route 30, 135 coming through, they both connect to Route 9, they lead to the regional highway system. A lot of competing demands. So you, you have parkers who come down to visit, you have the commuters coming through. You have either kids walking to school, or parents dropping off to school, or school buses coming through. As I mentioned, the bike accommodation and the walkable connections, truck movement, emergency response, the fire station's a block away from the center of town. So with all that, we're trying to balance, contribute to meeting those five major downtown goals that Jenny presented, and, and find either the, the trade-offs, understand what we can do, and the consequences of, of doing that. So we, we've set a few objectives as we approach the design. And at the public meeting, if, if you were all there, we presented, again, a refined triangle signalized concept. But, you know, and I'll, I'll show even more refinements tonight. But again, we, we started out with, let's improve safety for all users, whether it's the driver, pedestrian, bicycles. Improve the pedestrian walking environment, that means more, maybe being able to connect, walk through the center, feel comfortable walking along the sidewalk, whether, whether under shade trees or away from the moving traffic. Increase the public in green spaces, Jenny mentioned, and look at the large truck, fire apparatus movement, and then the last two with bike accommodation and parking. So there's, and there's a lot of balancing going on. Okay. So the other thing that we have, we do have a committee that we've been working with, with all the key departments, as well as representatives in the downtown business group. So again, we, we meet with them, we've taken the public comment, we keep testing things, you know, meet with the fire chief, and he says, can you test this movement, test that, or make sure you got the right truck? We know we've got trailers coming through town, so we test them. So this is, this is the conversion to a signal. This is the, the latest concept that we have developed. It's basically a five-legged intersection with Milk Street on the north side of the Arcade Building converting to two-way, and Milk Street on the south side of the Arcade Building, remaining one-way, and then when you get to West Main Street, you have to take a right turn, you can't do anything else. You can see this intersection, it's five legs, it's, it's fairly open in the middle because we have to accommodate large truck movement. Even though there's not a lot of trucks making the move from West Main onto South Street, there are some, so with large truck traffic prohibited on School Street, we have to accommodate that movement at the intersection. This option also, there's some variations that can occur with this option. We've, we've added some parking where we can, either on pieces of Milk Street, on East or West Main Street. The parking right now in front of the liquor store, that's an option where that whole area could be closed and made permanent public-type space, green space, public space, not parking. We've shown it in this concept, it show, it shows up in the plan. The two red, you see the two red markings, stripes, that leads, those are the alleyways. We talked about one of them earlier tonight, from the, the parking lot in back of Town Hall and sort of a, a shared, shared parking facility back there. So again, dressing up and making sure pedestrians know that they can get into the commercial area, get to West Main Street safely and, and nicely. So that's, that's this option. So what we also did was, the question came up on, well, can't we just keep the circle? And the downtown plan, planners, they, they looked at a number of options, signal options, different legs of the streets being changed, some a little bit like a Rotary. But I, I wanted to feel comfortable that either the, either a roundabout or a circle can or cannot work. So we went back to the drawing board over the last few weeks and redesigned the center as a, what we call a peanut-type of a roundabout. It's a, it's, if you, you're familiar with Kelly Square and Worcester, it has one there, but it's a lot, it's a little longer, a little skinnier, and there's more lanes going around it. This one is a single-lane roundabout. Again, we keep Milk Street on the south side of the Arcade Building, one-way. They don't enter the roundabout, they would come to the, come to West Main and have to take a right turn. The Milk Street section north of the Arcade Building gets converted to two-way, just like in the signal option. Not, it's not really, it's not fully colored up here, but while the center of the peanut is either grass or the flag, the memorial, all around it, in front of the Arcade Building, in front of the liquor store, a little bit in front of the, not quite the bank, in front of the 7-Eleven, all of those areas are spots where the curb can be kicked out for a wider sidewalk, or curb kicked out in green space, or a combination. So it's not all colored up because we just didn't have time to, to get it all prettied up for tonight's meeting, but, but we tested the trucks, we tested large trailer trucks, we tested the fire trucks, the ladder truck that the chief wanted, and, and it makes it all through. So what it... So what it, what it does compared to today's circle is it reduces the amount of paved area out there significantly. It gives a lot more order to entering the circle, tightens up spots where it's, we can still, probably crossing from a pedestrian point of view is better. We don't show all the, all the potential lengths of sidewalk, but you could picture the sidewalk that's on West Main Street wrapping around the liquor store, continuing on, and you'd be able to cross South Street over in front of the 7-Eleven, and you're all on raised islands or split, splitter, what they call splitter islands, but it would be a break and it'd be ADA accessible, you'd be, a pedestrian would be sitting in a protected area. We still got a lot of tweaking to do, but, but anyways, we, we wanted to either convince ourselves that you couldn't do it, or potentially you could do it. So we've, we've come back to this as a, as an alternative. So we haven't discarded the signal option yet, but now we, we feel pretty good that we've got two distinctly different concepts that could work in the center and, and be I'll go through a couple slides later that everything can probably work, whether it's a peanut or a signal. But we've started to also, oh, I guess the evaluation table's in the back. So let me just touch on a few of those other things, and then we can open it up for questions or more discussion. So this was from the downtown plan a bit, and then we modified it. But all we want to do is, we're keeping in mind, trying to connect pedestrian and bike between Bay State Commons and what I call the, sort of the heart of downtown, whether, whether you want to call it the circle or Town Hall. So that pink shows a potential in the future, you know, you're not far away, and there's so much synergy between the two that could occur, that we want to keep that in mind as redevelopment, new investment comes in, then you figure out ways to make that path. This question, you know, has come up a million times, bike accommodation through the, through downtown, really hard. As I said, it's, it's, you only got so much right-of-way out there and certain lane configuration. This, this one shows the older signal option. The green stripes on this diagram would, would represent a bike lane being defined from about Town Hall up to about Union Street or High Street. For that to occur, you'd end up either converting all the angle spaces to parallel parking spaces, or, or in some spots maybe having to eliminate some parking. But we can define, you know, a travel lane, a five-foot-wide bike lane, and a seven-to-eight foot-wide parking, parallel parking space on the curb. And, I mean, in this concept, in this, in this test for us, we didn't touch the curb, so the curb just remains the same, other than with the signal, we bumped out certain things. With bumpouts, you just cut the bumpout and if you had a bike lane, the bike lane would go right through the bumpout. Once you get down to Bay State Commons or Bay State Green, if we can make that connection, then you give, you have, you have other flexibility to, you know, you've taken the biker off the busy road and let them go. So that, so the downside on this, in the area that we're showing the green and the, in the bike lane, is we lose 31 on-street parking spaces. If we do a plan that also eliminates the parking, see, there's all these different pieces and those trade-offs and the balancing, but the parking in front of the liquor store to make public space, you lose another eight or so parking spaces. This diagram, just want to, again, it came up in questions, so we wanted to put it together and think, think it through. We know that there's a project on Route 30 down by Flanders Road and then heading out, and it ties into at least a future trail, BWAL, or whatever. So again, if we have bike accommodation going through downtown, well, what happens after that? The railroad overpass is, it's just a constraint, you know, it's, but, you know, we, again, we tried to think it through. The green dashed line on this diagram, so that shows the existing sidewalk on East Main Street, from about the railroad down to Lyman. And a quick review of the right-of-way out there in the room you have, maybe on that side, is you may be able to reconstruct that sidewalk to a wider shared-use path. So instead of having a five-foot or so sidewalk running up and down on, on that side of East Main, you go to a 10-foot or 12-foot if you can get it. And now you have a two-way shared-use path that someone can bike as well as walk, it can tie into the other project further to the, what I call east, but I guess it's north, going out past Lyman. What we showed in red, so if we get through downtown, we cut, get to High Street. If you, if a biker, if we cross him, either at High Street, follow that red line, and then you get to the railroad underpass that connects you to Water Street. So it's already there, and it's wide enough, and it's good for, you know, bicyclists, especially a kid, you know, like, so you come down to Water Street. We have to make sure now, whatever we have on, if we have a shared-use path on the south side, then we have to connect, you know, whether it's a rapid flash beacon or something at the end, from Water to connecting to the shared-use path. At High Street, we'd have to do something similar over there. It gives an opportunity to, at least for a bicyclist, to avoid staying on the road and going underneath the railroad overpass. It ends up going the red line as opposed to staying along East Main, it's only a quarter of mile longer in distance, and you're on low-volume road and safer situation. So we wanted to at least, we're presenting ideas that at least answer those questions of some options. The last area, okay, so public spaces and place making. So again, a lot of it came out of the downtown plan, and certainly the goal is to add space, and we did want to, you know, confirm with you that we're heading in a good direction or not. We see that section of Milk Street on the south side of the arcade building as potentially being able to periodically, you know, on a Saturday evening or something, closing it down basically and having, having an event, having activity space, whether it's an art festival or a little concert and things going on, celebration, right? So this shows the view from West Main, looking down that section of Milk Street, with some treatment, different treatment on the surface of the road, we've got parallel parking on both sides, it's wide enough for a vehicle to come down when it's open, adding some trees, adding some lighting overhead to make it a little special. And then we get to a point where we go, well, how about if we, we got something going on a little folk festival or an art festival? If you've ever been down to Watafire, if you move away from Watafire and walk a, a block or two away, you're at a craft little fair that people walk up and down and do things. So it's, it's a convertible area, it's, this is just very conceptual, but we're just trying to make something nice in downtown, again, with a goal of activating, given some public space, this wouldn't be a permanent closure, this is just temporary, you know, so, and my guess is it would have to be the usual permitted, permitted process to do some things like that. This is just a couple other views, this is if the Milk Street section in front of the liquor store was, was left open, but a view like, let's say, under the signal option, you see a little bit of more treatment on the, the expanded green area in the triangle, a little bit of surface treatment, and in this case, it's open, so we have some parking. This case, it's, it's really permanently closed. And again, we treat it a little bit differently, add some more green space, again, just to activate. So those, those are just illustrations, things like that, were just part of the project. Eventually, when there's a preferred option, we move into design, then the preliminary design will address those items. Most of, pretty much all of it, whether you pick the peanut roundabout or the signal, we'll be able to certainly do the Milk Street on the south side of the arcade building, and you'll end up doing something different in front of that liquor store anyways, because we'll have so much open area. And you could end up running, again, a wide sidewalk that bikes, bicyclists or walkers can proceed around the peanut. This, we're just starting to go through comparing these options, so this is a summary table, I think it was in your, was it in the packet? Wasn't in the packet, but we can get it to you. We're just really trying to compare, what's the existing condition-like versus the signal alternative and the peanut roundabout alternative? So we look at how, what's the number of parking spaces? We lose 14 under the signal, we lose 47 under the roundabout, not including what we do with bike accommodation. So some of that 31 I talked about are in the 47, just because it's in that circle. Designated bike facilities, yes, are feasible under both the peanut and the signal. Conflict points, conflict points are a little bit tricky, but if you picture a moving vehicle turning or coming together, that's a potential conflict point. So even under the existing circle, there's a limited number, it just seems like a lot more, just because of sort of the craziness out there, the wide openness. The signal generally has more conflict points because you have left turns opposing through movements, right turns opposing oncoming movements. To get rid of the 32 conflicts on the signal, you would end up going to separate phases for South Street, Milk Street, and Brigham Street, and then, so that's fine, you reduce the conflicts, but you add the signal timing and delays to the operation. Abutting properties, there's a little bit of impact, not, not acquisition so much, but the 7-Eleven on the South Street side, change of access, we'd have to maintain a drive, but you may not be able to, let's say, make a left turn in, you'd have to use Brigham Street to, to get in. Money-wise, roundabouts certainly, in this, this case, the roundabout option will be a lot more expensive than the signal option, and the signal option, and we haven't developed cost estimates yet, but it's not a simple signal option because we're doing so much to change the curbs and the bumpouts and the, the treatment. And next steps. So again, we, we can answer any questions, we have a lot of information with us. We need to continue to assess the current options we have, coordinate with property owners, meet with the study committee, show the chief we can get the fire trucks around under each condition, and then eventually, hopefully soon, select a preferred option, probably have to go to the public again and present that, and then move it into preliminary design, hopefully. Thank you.
Jenny, did you have anything?
All right. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks. Thank you very much for that, this was very informative, and yeah, if we could get some of these newer slides too, just, that's why you saw us turning our back to, that was not anything because it was easy to see up there, so, yeah. Chris, anything to kick off here?
Yeah, I mean, I guess just generally, just, we've talked a lot about the long-term capital plan and looking at all of the projects, so one thing that we talked about the last time, that we discussed the BWAL as an example, was, was getting a presentation of all of the transportation projects. So that is underway and is actually, we actually got a preview of it at the development team meeting, and so that's being finalized and anticipated to be presented at your August 12th meeting, along with a proposed long-term capital plan. And I say that because I think that as you're considering funding for all of these projects, you, you want to look at the totality of, of the town, upcoming town projects and then priorities. So you don't have that information for this evening, they actually, they haven't, they just said they haven't developed a cost estimate yet, but just understanding that that conversation is, is still to come.
Great, and I think, this was in our packet, I think what, kind of looking for us is help with next steps forward, I think this is new information here tonight, but I do want to open it up for the board for questions and comments, it sounds like there's more to come back to us, so I would encourage us to, to ask the questions we need to think about or kind of give them instructions that are coming forward. I like it almost, I'm thinking of kind of a site plan review, I'm not sure that, you know, we're ready to go into depth on either thing, I think, thank you for the peanut option, that's, that is, at least for me, new, I think it's new to all of us, it's, and I, I really appreciate it because I do think it, it, you know, truly shows that you've listened to the feedback and the feedback you provided us, we're, we're seeing it as well, we appreciate that. I, I know I personally appreciate that because I do think it provides another potential option out there, too.
Yeah, so I did put in your packet that, and I said this in the beginning, that I think we're looking sort of more generally for next steps. Obviously, you're not going to be able to give very detailed feedback on the peanut option because you haven't seen it yet, so I think just trying to understand what this board is hoping to see in terms of next steps.
So, who wants to start?
Can I, can I throw, maybe I'll throw it out there to start, if, and it's just, and I think it counted in the meeting, but like, when we look at the downtown goals, and I know the question has come up, but the one thing that was definitely talked about the last meeting but isn't in the list of goals is traffic improvement. I know that's something that we get quite a bit, is there ways to improve traffic, and I know we did spend time on, we also get things about the bridge, I know you addressed that the last meeting, we didn't do that tonight, and if someone could ever solve that, it could be worth a million dollars, but, or more, but I wonder if that's something from a, a goal, I mean, we're looking at safety, pedestrian, bicycles, but I do know that we all live through it, but we also get concerns about, okay, if we go to a design, what does it mean in terms of traffic improvements? Are there traffic improvements, are the backups the same, are they worse? So that's just a, you know, piece on, on my side from, from a kind of overarching question.
Right, and, yeah, we'll definitely be, you know, further analyzing that. If, if you went to the public meeting, which I think you all did or at least watched, they did a visum analysis showing the traffic flow with the, the triangle concept, and it did show an improvement to the traffic flow. You know, we're not going to eliminate cars, right? You, you can't, you know, shut the gates, so to speak, and say no one else is allowed to come in. But we can improve traffic flow, and I think right now, what we heard a lot is that there's a lot of ambiguity at the rotary, which causes a lot of the backup, because when you approach the rotary, you're not sure if you should yield, if you should stop, if you should just fly straight through, and then, you know, while you're trying to decide all those things, it can cause that traffic backup. So our goal is to remove some of that ambiguity and with that, improve traffic flow. So I would assume that with both of those options, that that would be further analyzed.
So, yeah, so first of all, I want to thank, I think Mark and Patrick put a bunch of questions in our packet, so thank you very much. And I candidly, my head is spinning a little bit, there's just so much to think about here, and thank you to echo Ian's comments about bringing forward the peanut design. I was disappointed, I was, I only wanted one little dollar sign, but thank you for being honest. You know, I almost, I almost feel like the work we did back in, you know, when we did our strategic plan, and we were in groups and we were working through this with department heads and some, Ian, I think you were the only member on the board at that time still here, I feel like we need to have to have that kind of conversation. Like, I can't even begin to think through that in this kind of forum. I think that's my first thing. And then I think, well, why should we do that? Is it more public engagement sessions, which I think it is because in this case, I mean, I've seen lots of comments online, some of which have come directly to the board of things. I was like, oh, I didn't think of that, right? So I feel like we're inching forward and I want this to go forward. So what I can say is, I think we do need to, you're hitting on all the points. I appreciate that you clarified, Jenny, about the rotary ambiguity. That's a great way to think of it and how it does impact traffic. So I think we have all the right things in mind, and we need to keep moving this forward, but I think it still needs lots of input. And, you know, you guys do your work, and then everyone sort of comes together and kicks the tires. And I know that that sounds slow. It's lots of coordination, but that's where I feel like we're at.
Thanks, Shelby. Sean?
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate you continuing to come up with new ideas. The peanut feels to me like, in looking how everything's going to come into the center of town, that conceptually, it seems like it would really slow down traffic. But I may be wrong. There's fewer lanes coming into town instead of like two lanes coming in from one thirty-five. It's down to one and things like that. And so I don't know if that's gonna...
Is that a good thing? Or when you say slows down, because we've got comments saying we don't want to have speed through.
Yeah, yeah, I guess my concern is that because there's two lanes entering the rotary now from, if you're coming from the dump, one thirty-five, whichever direction that is, you can get people through the rotary faster and the backup probably doesn't get as significant as if you only had one lane there with the same volume. I can't remember what thirty looked like coming in from Route nine, if that was a single lane there now.
Roundabout, single.
Single lane. So there, it's two, and you can take the right onto one thirty-five. So it does relieve some traffic congestion there as well. But I also like all the green that is now created by the peanut. I don't know, maybe cool to say our downtown is a peanut. I don't know.
Come up with a...
No, we would be unique, I would imagine, be the only peanut. So I think some things to think about there. I do like the fact that you are really looking at Milk Street as it comes into the rotary and sort of, that the lane that is used now to enter the rotary, it can be very difficult. It backs up easily because you really, if there's a truck or something parked there in that end spot, you're really inching out into the rotary before you can commit. So I feel like that lane kind of runs a lot slower than all the others. And so by making the other lane two-way, that seems to make a lot of sense to me. And it is, once you add curbs and things and define it better, that seems pretty intelligent. You know, and it's tough. You're right about some of the other, the pedestrian, we've added the signalized crossing there on thirty, but I don't know how much safer that's actually made it. I think now people just feel more confident, hit the button and go, you know? So there is a lot going on down there. And honestly, when I look at the whole thing from above, and you take the rotary and then you add sort of the, what do you call it? So little carve-outs coming from, on one thirty-five, if you're coming in from the dump, and then on Route nine, and you look at it from above, it does kind of look like a triangle. And that's how the, the traffic flows in a triangle. I could see why you came up with that idea. So I guess I'm just making a lot of comments here, but, but I think there is something to try and at least not make, at least not to make traffic flow slower through the center of town. I think that would be a negative impact. And, but I think there are a lot of opportunities to clean up around the rotary, and I think you've looked at a bunch of them, and I appreciate your continuing to think about this. Thank you. Was that supposed to be questions?
Comments, questions is fine. Mark, Patrick?
Oh, I have so much to say. It's not, not gonna, I'm not gonna go into, I assume my comments and questions got forwarded, and you've had a chance to look at those. And I would love to have somebody explain to me sometime why those don't work. Like, I don't understand a lot of the suggestions in here, why we're going north of the Arcade Building. Why don't we just make Milk Street in? Anyway, I made those points, right? I don't want to rehash all of those. I would suggest, I have one suggestion on the bike connectivity. I would suggest using Summer Street from that rather than High Street because you might be able to go straight into Brigham and get down to the community center with a, some type of bike lane.
It's a flatter.
You also have Church Street at that same Fisher Church, Milk intersection. That's a truck-restricted street that you could put Sheroes in and potentially get down to School Street and have a bike route down to South. I mean, I've thought about this for sixteen years, and I guess I'm gonna just tell everyone a story. I don't know if everybody knows Brian Bush. He was on the planning board before I was, and then he came back on the planning board. And he used to tell the story about the Tufts Building. We all remember the Tufts Building that sat vacant for, I don't know, thirty, forty years. And he used to tell this story that his daughter would tease him and say, Dad, if you die and that building's still like that, your work will not be done, right? And I just feel like, you know, this was being studied in eighty-two. This was being studied. You know, I had somebody who I won't mention who was much older than me, who said it was even being studied before that, right? Like, we study everything to death. At some point, we gotta start doing. Now, we have to be careful about the expense, right? Like, how can we get the state to pay for some of it? I don't know the answers to all of that. But I do know that, you know, Westboro is the best borough, and that section from the rotary on East Main Street does not, like, there's nothing wrong with West Main Street, you know, but that East Main Street section needs to be recreated to look like West Main Street. South Street could probably use some improvements. Milk Street could use some improvements. I mean, we have a shell of a building for sale that, you know, again, we have four gas stations downtown. I'm not even counting that couple in farms that we're top squads. So some of that really comes down to, do we encourage redevelopment and that additional revenue pays for the street improvements? Or do we try to do the street improvements and that brings in redevelopment? It's, you know, chicken, you know, cross the road scenario, what comes first? I don't know. But I do know that, you know, I would never bike through the rotary. I would, I don't like walking through the rotary. I get nervous trying to get into the flagpole area of the rotary. So I think it's, I think it's time we do something. You know, I think there are some things we could do. We talked about the railroad bridge is not a doable thing. I'd love to get some of the Harvey traffic out of the rotary, but we've barked up that, you know, we've been down that road unsuccessfully, right? But there's a lot of curb cuts on East Main, right? To me, that stuff slows down traffic as much as the hesitation at the rotary. The angled parking is not conducive to traffic flow. If we are gonna take away angled parking, which is suggested in both of those scenarios, where do we recreate it, right? Because we, you can tell me all you want about the South Street lot, but people are gonna want convenient parking, you know, near Dairy Queen or whatever. Anyway, so I, we just need to come up with plans for that. I see a lot of green space, but, you know, some of that would require private acquisitions. I'm not sure I want to spend money acquiring private property unless it's going to improve the parking situation. Again, I like the idea of a pedestrian walkway, but I don't see why we don't just use Union Street for that connectivity to Bay State. I mean, everybody going to Bay State has already turned at the light, or everybody coming from the south is going down Brigham. So Union Street seems to me like a redundant road, and that would give us that connectivity without acquiring private property. So I could go on. Again, I put everything into my questions. A lot of it was minutia, and I don't think tonight's the night for minutia. I've probably been too verbose already, so. And I'll think of like eighteen things I wanted to say later.
I think that's my question. Like, when do we get to some of this minutia? I think that, I mean, I know we don't want to go there tonight, but I think that's, to me, what the, when and how.
Yeah, and I think, I think maybe more will come out of, as Christie said, our next meeting. I think that's part of where the overall transportation plans. I think part of this also is, it comes back to prioritization, too. And I think it's giving direction to say, okay, here's what we have. I think having two options now is really great, and I think, I think we wanna, I want to see some more information come back. And I think from the meetings we've had, I think this, I think this will resonate with residents, whether it works or not. To John's, there's some more, a lot of questions, I think, that you heard there of things to think about. To your point about Cross, I didn't mention it before. To me, today, one easy suggestion, and some people won't be happy with, I think we should shut off pedestrian access to the rotary completely today. So you have to walk around it. You don't walk through it. We've already done that on one section, on what I call the backside, if you're coming from West Main Street, but why not in front of the liquor store, just shut that off? I know that's used for a whole host of things. So maybe we figure out a way if we're gonna have an event there or the flags that the veterans put out there, and we still want to do that. It's a, I don't know how you do it, police escort, whatever, but not make it a walk-through in which I think both options kind of consider that as, you're kind of getting them out of that. That, to me, is something that, I should consider something doing that today of just excluding that as a pedestrian walkway through the rotary.
Can I just make a comment on the parking aspect? So we have been looking at the zoning too, which we do plan to bring some changes to the October town meeting on the zoning. The downtown zoning is pretty flexible right now. So when we're looking at redevelopment opportunities, it's also, you know, trying to market the downtown to get those businesses to come in. A lot of the feedback when we were walking around and talking to the different businesses downtown was that they don't feel like it's safe for vehicles. They get a lot of complaints from their clients or customers that they don't necessarily feel safe coming into the rotary, or if they park somewhere and walk over, they're not comfortable with that. So I think that's really important feedback and also understanding the priorities. So from a business standpoint, you never want to lose parking, right? But understanding if we had a place to park, would people be willing to walk from that place to get to that business? That was one of the questions we asked at the farmer's market on Thursday, and most of the responses were they did not mind walking, except for maybe in the winter, right? But, so that was just really interesting to hear, and we'll continue to do that sort of feedback. And then talking to the businesses as well, because, you know, they're definitely an important aspect of this, and we want to know, you know, if we remove some of their parking, what would they see as an alternative? Are they going to be comfortable with a parking lot that's off-site, encouraging their clients to walk? It sounds like most members of the public are okay with that. And then in terms of the zoning, if we change the zoning to encourage, you know, businesses to want to come in, part of that redevelopment and looking at the planning board site plan review can be asking them to contribute to that parking, you know, maybe through a private lot, something like that. Depends, of course, on the type of development. So we're definitely thinking about those things and how they, how they integrate with each other. But I think the key word here is prioritization. You know, what are the priorities here?
Great, thanks. Patrick?
Thank you, Ian. So I'll just say, first of all, thank you to the team for all the work that you've done on this. I've attended most, I think, almost all of the sessions, and I found them to be very well-run, very informative. I think that the community received them well. So thank you very much for running those in such an effective way. Like Mark, I have sent in numerous questions. And I think that as we continue to refine this conversation, I think those questions will either become more relevant or less relevant. So I'll look for that to happen through the natural course of the process. You know, I agree with Mark that I could go on here for quite a while. It's a very complex topic, per Shelby's comment, and there's a lot of pieces to it. I really look at the board as kind of really needing to focus in on the traffic and the safety piece of this. The zoning piece of it obviously falls predominantly under, you know, other boards in the community. So I think that's one way. I slice it off of my mind. I, we do have, I'll say, we do have some input there, and that's important. But I'm really focused more on that traffic and safety's piece of it. So my questions for tonight will, I think, predominantly focus on that space. In one of those early sessions, I think it was last year, there were comments around the grading of the three options. Well, actually, I'm gonna take a step back for a moment. I want to ask a very basic question first. This was grant-funded. How much grant funding is left to continue from where we are today, to continue this process, to continue to research and study all of these options, including more detail on the peanut option as it's laid out here? Do we know?
For this specific design, right now, so we're at the preliminary design, so it would go up to about twenty-five, thirty percent.
Of something, of one of these, right?
Of one of these, right.
Okay.
Right.
So where are we with that? I mean, because this is great. This is a new option that's come out. I'm hopeful that we are still thinking about other options, and I'll get into that in a few moments. And I'm asking the question because I want to understand what the financial bandwidth is to entertain other options as we look at this. So...
Yeah, I mean, well, the scope in their contract is to get to that twenty-five percent, thirty percent design.
Right.
I don't know exactly the number where we are with invoices and things like that.
I'd look for that to be a follow-up if somebody can provide that information at some point, knowing that we've got now what is, I think, if you take the original, the three plans that came out last year, and this one is another one. So you've got now five different options that have been laid out there, and that's consumed X number of dollars from the grant fund. You know, does that leave us more room to do more work to look at other options is the heart of my question.
I think potentially, I mean, we want to hear the feedback. Like, when we went into this, we were pretty comfortable with the triangle option, but we wanted to, you know, define it a little more. But then when we had more public input, more feedback, it was really, wait a minute, we, you know, most, I won't say most people, but half the people were not comfortable with it, which is fine, right? That's, we wanted to know that. That's what the purpose of those public meetings are. So we went back and I said, we need to look at the rotary again. We need to look at another option because I don't know that moving forward with the triangle concept as it is, is the best plan right now.
Yeah. And so kind of to feed off of that question, we talk about, in those studies that were done on those options last summer, the original rotary, as it is today, I think was rated as an E, right, as far as safety. I think the best option, which I believe was the triangle, was rated, I think it was a C minus, maybe? It was C or C minus.
I believe it was a C or B in some areas. I believe it was a C or B in some areas.
Okay. So, it got... It was an improvement. I don't... This peanut design is, assuming it's so new that that part hasn't been done yet. So, we don't know if it's gonna be a D, or a B, or a whatever. But on your other slide, you had some indication of the number of interaction... What'd you call them, interaction points, or whatever? Conflict points? So, it was similar to the Rotary, but it looks like it's more efficient in its design in regards to getting traffic through that space. I don't know if you have any answer now as far as to what that grading would be, but I would assume that we're gonna get that level of detail at some point. Okay. So, that we're part of our analysis.
One thing, just to think about...
Come on up to the...
Sorry. One thing on the... If you look at the conflicts or decision points, and it gets to like what you liked, how Jenny said, ambiguity. So, that single lane peanut starts to get rid of the ambiguity. And we do still need to test. And we need to revise, you know, that five-legged, the signal option right now, that we've determined, if you're gonna go with the signal option, it's that type of an option. If all the truck movement is gonna be met, we need to test that as well. So, it is different than the triangle that came out last year, because they hadn't... We went out and did field survey work. We had the detail to run the trucks and test things that...
Sure. So, in that vein, I guess my question would be, and I would love to see it, you know, as you expand on this table, and in the concept of this table, what is the forecast, right? So, today, the Rotary, as it's designed today, can handle X amount of traffic. I don't know what that number is. You know, commercial traffic, residential traffic, et cetera. What is the proposed alternative traffic signal versus roundabout? What does that gain us as far as the traffic? Because you know, if you build it, they're gonna come, right? You improve this, and you make it easier for people to get through, and safer for people to get through, there's a percentage of traffic. And not only that, Westboro's the fastest-growing town in the state. So, we're gonna continue to see its significant growth in traffic through the Rotary. So, my question to you would be, if you don't have the numbers now, I would love to see those numbers in the future to understand, to weigh that. Because is it beneficial to lose forty-seven parking spaces on the peanut, but gain the ability to put, you know, ten percent more traffic through the space? So, that's my ask. Another reason why I was asking about the grant funds that are left is we've talked about it, Mark even made comment a few moments ago, around the train bridge. And quite honestly, you know, in this day and age, we've built the Big Dig. We build skyscrapers that are sixteen hundred feet tall. Anything is possible. And I don't know why we're ruling out the opportunity or the potential for going to the state and asking the train bridge, what is the cost? I don't know what the costs are with these. We none of the... You know, I don't know if these are ten million or a hundred million dollar projects. If it's a hundred million dollar project, I bet you, you probably could get the train, you know, train line raised for less than a hundred million dollars. So, I don't think we should rule out those things. And one of the reasons why I think that's a viable option is because when I moved here in nineteen eighty-three, the Water Street Bridge was open. And that's about the time that, as we heard, all of a sudden, we started having problems. But people use that as a bypass to go around the Rotary. So, if you raise the rail bridge, and you have to go out a mile in both directions, you're gonna cover the water bridge. That could be raised as well. And now, you have the ability to move traffic around the Rotary and bypass that whole area. I'm not a traffic expert. But I would love to understand, is that an option? And how would it cost compare? And what would be the benefits to this versus, you know, redesigning the whole Rotary? If you've driven through Kelly Square, the peanut option, hey, that looks like a good option. Peanut's... Kelly Square is way more complex than the Rotary. So, it might actually work. I've driven through, and that is a nightmare. Even still today, it's terrible.
I wouldn't walk through Kelly Square.
No, I wouldn't. I have rode... I ride my bike through this Rotary all the time.
It's better than it used to be.
It is better than it used to be. It is absolutely better than it used to be. But my point is that I just feel like we're just throwing things off the table arbitrarily that could solve these problems, right? Not only... I just, you know, and Mark, I'm not pointing at you. I've heard it from a lot of people over the years, that like, oh, you just can't build...
I was trying to figure out how raising the bridge is gonna solve all the problems.
It's not gonna solve all the problems. Neither will any of these. So, my point is, one of the big things we're talking about is traffic, safety, and volume, right? So, if you are able to move some of that traffic outside of the Rotary area, then naturally, you're gonna improve safety, and you're gonna improve walkability. You might even improve the ability to put bikes through the area, because you've reduced that, you know, a percentage of that traffic. I don't know. Again, I'm not a traffic expert. And that's why I'm asking how much, what funds are left? And is that an option that we would like to better understand? I don't know. So, that's the vein of those questions. I do, you know, there was a comment earlier about not reducing the speed through the Rotary. A lot of communities in the state of Massachusetts do have town-wide speed reduction, you know, speed limits. And safety is an issue. We talked, we just heard the two-hundred and... What was it, two-hundred and eighty-three accidents, or whatever it was that you listed? Was there any research to find out whether or not a simple speed reduction from thirty miles to a twenty-five mile-per-hour zone for the downtown area might reduce that volume of accidents by, I don't know, a number? I'd love to understand that.
Raise tables or...
Exactly. Or raise tables, or the vibrating strips down, you know, chicanes, et cetera, that could be built in here that could slow down Rotary or... You know, essentially, the peanut option is basically just a series of chicanes to get people to bypass, to work their way around. And that's good, to see that as an option. So...
Can I say just a couple of things to that? So, I think what I at least get out of tonight is you all didn't say, "Don't even think about that peanut." So, now, we have two options to test further. I probably haven't heard you all say it, but I think in a way you did, is that, under the current condition... The current conditions are not great, to say the least, in terms of confusion, ambiguity, bad pedestrian movement, all that. So, once we leave here tonight, now we know, okay, we've got two... Because we've looked at the multitude of options that the downtown plan looked at very high level. You know, it was extremely high level. And we don't have a budget to reexamine, go back and look at all of them. All... The peanut option was not one of them, that they... We ended up looking at it and going just fresh. And then, we went back, we were able to get a copy of what they looked at. But now that we have these, then the plan... The plan is gonna be more than just that center point. So, if we are to have the bike lanes on West Main Street and a portion of East Main, then we'll start to work through that with the options, whether roundabout or signal, go into parallel parking, speeds, if you're saying, you know, maybe the crossing, the ped crossing with the rapid flash on South Street. Maybe that becomes a raised crossing on top of having the rapid flash beacon. My own... We do a lot of safety work, a lot of safety studies. And my personal preference is not to do town-wide twenty-five mile-per-hour speeds. They're very hard to... They're still hard to enforce and change behavior. So, you go to the physical type of design to help enforce that. You might end up doing things like, as you're coming into the center of town, you may be able to get a quote "village" or "business district" speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour, and be able to do something like that, but still use some physical features. And that peanut roundabout does that.
Yeah.
The signal, the signal does that. You know, although there were some people at the public meetings saying, "Oh, you put a signal in, everyone's gonna go flying through that intersection." I don't tend to see that, but, you know, whatever. If people... One thing you do end up with the signal is, you do have people trying to, you know, beat the light. You know, the yellow comes, and they... And this would be a wide-open area. So, it is potentially more prone to that type of behavior. But anyway, so, we would have, we'll have a plan that is more than just that dot in the middle. And your suggestions on the... We just illustrated, how can, if the B-Walk goes, and the improvements down at Flanders go, how can you get bikes from West Main and the movements over there? So, that's where we just started thinking. Church Street, School Street. I look at them as the pretty important streets for the town, even though the residential, you've placed truck restrictions on them. But pretty much, everyone now is, if I'm on West Main, and I'm going to South Street towards Hockington, or the Westboro areas to the south, I'm turning right on School Street now, and then I turn right on South. The improvement that we make, whether it's a signal, or peanut, or whatever, it's not gonna change that. It's... The people are doing it now. People are turning left from South onto School, crossing West Main, getting onto Church. And for some reason, they love coming out onto Milk Street down by Fisher. But, anyway, so what I would say, and it's beyond the scope of this work that we're doing. I mean, we looked at East Main right of way to see, hey, what can you do? You can even do some other things, probably. You can do probably a rebuild of the sidewalk to shared use, and you might even be able to put a center turn lane. Or, like you were saying, manage the driveways a little better. You'd have to work with the property owners to, you know, narrow them or eliminate a few. But even tonight, at five-thirty, it only took me four minutes to go from Lyman through the circle and park my car in front of Town Hall. So, you know, there is perception. Slow is better in terms of, if there is a crash, slow is better. Slow allows a driver to see a kid jump out into the street better, and be able to stop a bicyclist cross, whatever. So, but anyways, my point is, now that we have these options, we're gonna continue the evaluation. And I think at the end of the day, whichever one you choose, you're gonna have some ideas on, okay, so here's some different parking layout and signage or bike... And you might even be able to choose some things off early in preparation of the plan coming. And you'll also have some time to, all right, we know we gotta replace fifty-five parking spaces. So, let's examine our areas and see how we get them. You mentioned, I think, the connection to Bay State Commons. So, yes, Union Street is a way to do that. And we're not saying, go take property. None of the work we're doing has anything to do with the town taking property. But in the redevelopment pieces, as you go into ten, twenty years in the future, then you get public space or public access, still could be private property, but a public, a more convenient public way. But anyway, so, we'll have that over the next month or two, more analysis. We'll develop some costs, and we'll tie in all these other things into the overall plan.
Ian, if I could just follow up on...
Yeah.
Follow up. So, I'll just give you a sense of my finger in the wind as far as I think of how the community is thinking of this. I can understand the need. Town's growing incredibly fast, there's traffic issue. I wanna see the Rotary situation, safety improved, no doubt about it. What I'm not seeing, and I'll liken this back to the library debate a few years ago, where the library came forward with this, you know, big, huge plan. And in one of my very first board meetings, I asked the question, what's Plan B? They didn't have Plan B. So, there was no opportunity to go look at a Plan B. Well, guess where we ended up? Years later, we ended up with Plan B. And my point, I don't think that the town has the appetite to be spending tens and tens of millions of dollars on this project, when we're not even entertaining, it doesn't sound like, an idea to say, "Keep the Rotary where it is." And I'm not saying I'm staunch keeping the Rotary. I'm just saying that, what are the other options? Because if you're coming to me, and it's a hundred million dollars for each one of these, and yet, we didn't look at something that is just more simplistic in its nature that doesn't touch this, but could solve half the problems, we need to understand that. We need to understand what are the other options that lessen the risk, improve safety, but maybe are not the ultimate desire.
That's fair.
Mark?
So, I'll agree with Patrick. I would like to know if there's less invasive and less expensive options that would have safety improvements? Because, you know, this is probably two years of serious misery downtown, right? While this gets done. And if it's two years, I can put up with if I see concrete, you know, real benefits. Now, I still don't understand, I've made this point. We have two major roads. We have 135 and 30. Why are we diverting 135? Why are we not just going straight through Milk to South? Encourage all the traffic movement? I say east-west, everything's, you know, northwest, southeast. And then, encourage all the traffic movement on 30 to move through, right? Help those people get through, because Brigham Street's a dead end, right? It's an important dead end, but it's still a dead end. And my point about the bike and using Church and School, those roads are secondary roads to those two roads that I talked about. Let's give the bicyclists a safe route close to downtown? You know, I mean, if you, right? Let's not encourage them to use the same roads that we're putting all the heavy trucks on, that we're putting all the... Now, I do agree, we need to make sure that people are not going through these intersections at forty miles an hour. But I can tell you that I've been in the Rotary when somebody has come through, and we all have, when somebody has come from South Street at fifty miles an hour, barreling through and not stopped, and, you know, not even thought twice, right? And we've all seen that. I saw a car get flipped over on its head once in the Rotary, because it was broadsided. And I don't think that is a... I think we should aspire to do better, right? Now, I don't wanna spend a fortune, because I'm sensitive to that. But we need to start doing, instead of just planning, and studying, and thinking. Because I've been thinking about this for a long time.
What are the next steps?
So, I think next steps, I think, you said, I think there's some stuff to take away. This other design, bring it back. I think there's, I think, as Christie said, but I think our next meeting, we're gonna see a broader transportation plan, which is something that we've asked for. I think that will help us as well evaluate prioritization, which I think is key here. It comes back, and then I think, you know, from the results of those two, I think even before we get the results, we should probably, you know, without looking at pictures, whatever, after that presentation next week, have a discussion as to, you know, where we wanna go. What is the highest priority? Where do we start? I think tonight, what I'd like to, separating out, just to be clear on, and I know you've heard it, people walked out of that last meeting saying, "I'm a business owner, and my property's mine," you know? You know, and they... Because it wasn't really understood. And you've made it very clear tonight, but I think that was a miss for all of us, to say, from a town standpoint, because that's not the... I know it was not the intention, but unfortunately, it came across as, hey, here's a picture, and that's my building, and now, it's a park, you know? And so, I think we learn as we go. But I think, so I think next steps, you've heard some comments here. We do appreciate you coming in front of us. I think for us, the next meeting, we'll get the full kind of transportation plan, which I know I think you guys will appreciate, because, again, we've seen it in the, in our preview of it, in the planning meeting. And then, I think from that, we can talk about kind of our next steps and help with where we go.
Who will present that transportation plan?
So, Jenny and Chris and Fred have been working on the plan. And then, I'll present the long-term capital plan.
Okay. I only ask, because I know sometimes we have a conflict with planning boards. So, that's why I was asking. Great, thanks.
Hopefully, we don't.
Well, no, I think it's... I'm asking because I think it's, yeah, scheduling, yeah. Having your lens here, Jenny, is, you know, appreciated, because you've also been in regular discussions on this project and other things. So, if that can happen, that would be ideal.
Yep.
Thanks.
I'll definitely be there.
Yes. Yes. Well, great, well, thank you very much. Sorry to keep you so late.
Hey Jenny, I'm sorry, before you leave, our next agenda item is to do with the third Tuesday in October. Is that normally a planning board, the third Tuesday?
Oh, for October 21st?
Yeah.
Yes, I would, I would have to change that if the board decided.
Okay.
You would potentially change it anyway, because town meeting is the day before.
You could go a second day.
Let's get onto that agenda item, I just, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure that that was.
You were getting information, so.
Just getting information.
Okay, so with that, good segue. Item nine, alternative date for October special town meeting. Chris, maybe just introduce it for the publics.
So the bylaws regularly schedule the fall town meeting on the third Monday in October, which is October 20th in 2025. The school department has reached out to advise that they will be celebrating Diwali, that Diwali is that day, and they will be celebrating with the day off. So in recognition of, of that, we're bringing it to this board to set an alternative date, which you're allowed to do under the bylaw. I have reached out to the town clerk, as well as town moderator who's here, and the school department, and they've advised that the next day, the 21st, would be available. It's typically on a Monday, but the Monday before is also a holiday, and the Monday after is, is possible. The, the risk, potential conflict that I've identified in your packet is that the Main Street trick-or-treat is typically that last Tuesday in October. So if it were to go into a second day, I think that would be very difficult to navigate both events.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Please do.
Is there a reason, if we're going to move the date, does it have to be on a Monday? I know the language says, you know, ordinarily held, third Monday, alternative may be decided on, so it can be any day. Okay, so just right now, I have, I have worked plans on the 21st and 22nd, I would be out of state, just so the board knows. I don't know if that's actually gonna happen, but it's already on the calendar. And my question is, is there a reason why we couldn't do it on a weekend?
No, you could do it any day.
Okay.
But I think ultimately, we're just looking for an alternative date to be set. If, if there's going to be an alternative date set, to set it quickly, so that we can schedule the, the voting clickers, and then also so that people can sort of back out from that timeline, specifically the planning board having to hold public hearings as an example.
And, and we don't, we wouldn't wanna push this into November, right? Because I think that those other, or we could.
You could, I mean, we've had special town meetings in November before.
There are elections in November this year.
Well, there are, yeah, yeah. And then it's Veterans Day, you know, it's like, it's at least on those first couple days of the week.
Yep.
Do you have a second question? Other thoughts, I mean, personally looking at it, this made the most sense to me. You know, I think Saturdays, we have just to look at school calendars and other things, but.
I think we brought before the town to move this meeting regularly to Saturday and got feedback that that was not what folks wanted. So I would try to avoid a Saturday if we could. Essentially means we're not listening. In my interpretation of that.
And I'll be the moderator here, John, any comments, do you wanna come up and speak to that can maybe help us in our deliberation here?
Yeah, John Arnold, 251 West Main Street, the moderator. All I would do is, I mean, I don't, I'm no Diwali expert, worked for a company that celebrated it, because we had an India division, I would just check and make sure that even though the schools are giving the Tuesday off, that the event for families doesn't go into the night, because if families celebrate Diwali Tuesday night by moving it from Monday to Tuesday, we haven't done any good. So I would actually ask somebody who actually celebrates it to make sure that, that that's okay. And other than that, I will reiterate, yes, Sean, when you mentioned it, yes, the, the attempt to decide whether the fall town meeting should also be on Saturday was, was voted down quite strongly, because there were religious concerns for people who celebrate the Sabbath on Saturday, who already feel that they have to be put out for the annual town meeting. In terms of my schedule, I'm available anytime that week. I would not be available on November 3rd, which is the Monday after Halloween, because of a family wedding that I expect to be attending. So I'd say, try to do our best to balance when is convenient for the voters, the most number of voters, and we've inconvenienced, and then inconvenienced as few of the, of us elected and appointed officials in town, and town employees as possible.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I, I agree, I'm just doing a quick Google search, but I am not an expert on Diwali. It looks like it's Monday, the 20th, is the most important day to celebrate, but that's... I don't, I guess I'll go with others, I think, I think the proposed Tuesday and potentially into Wednesday makes sense, people have that week. Typically, I have Monday, I know I have Monday and Tuesday on my calendar already blocked off, but, so moving it to Tuesday and skipping Monday just makes sense. But, I don't know what others think.
22nd doesn't buy us anything, does it, moving it to the Wednesday?
Then the, then the backup, if it rolls over, then that's into Thursday, right? So, I don't know.
I mean, I'll just say, don't, don't plan around me. I mean, like, work happens and.
Life happens.
People have missed.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Well, well, no, but.
I won't be personally happy about it, but that's my problem, not yours.
But, but thank you for letting us know, because then we're just too short of not having quorum.
Right.
Right, so.
And I, and it could change, but right now, this was the other conference, so.
And I guess the other question is, if we, if we decided on potentially other dates, we'd have to go back to the schools to make sure that the auditorium was available, which is then another, you know, pushes it to our next meeting.
Well, I mean, you could, you could set the date subject to the school being available, and then if it was available, we could start advertising it right away.
Okay, but I'm generally okay with the 21st.
I was just bringing up that point about the planning board meeting, just to make sure they were aware of it, not, I mean, I think your, your point about they would probably have to plan around a two-night town meeting anyway. So, I just don't know what's on their agenda.
Well, we haven't, we haven't gotten out to boards and committees yet, because we didn't know what date you would choose, but I did let the department heads know that this discussion was happening.
Right, I don't know what other meetings are held on Tuesday nights.
Sluck board.
Well, the third Tuesday.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Can, can I just ask a question? Is there a reason why the 15th doesn't work?
What's the 15th?
Wednesday, the 15th. I mean.
We lose a week?
We lose a week, okay.
Well, I mean, honestly, you could, you could choose any day. That was just a recommendation, because it was sort of targeting the same timeframe, but as long as our moderator and our town clerk are available and the schools are open, I think you can choose any date.
So we, we have a meeting scheduled for the 14th, is that, we were thinking of the 14th into the 15th, or the 15th into the 16th? Ideally, it's only one night.
Yeah, I was thinking, no, I was thinking the 15th and 16th, but only because Monday's a long weekend, right? Everyone's recovering from it or whatever on Tuesday, so then the 15th. And the other one was the 29th. And I'm being totally selfish in this.
Surely, the 29th was out because of the trick-or-treat.
That's 28th, though, I think.
The 28th is the trick-or-treat. I mean, it is, I mean, that might be a lot, I don't know.
So either the 15th or the 29th.
Oh, I see, yeah, the 29th.
I was more concerned about the, the traffic and ability to get to the high school during the trick-or-treat.
Oh, yeah, no, we don't, we don't, I mean, that's become such an event. We would lose, people would be like, what are you crazy? Like, I'm doing trick-or-treat, I'm not going to town meeting. But if you guys agree with 21st, 22nd, let's go with it. I just was, and then, you know, the, the 4th is voting day. The following week, we've got Veterans Day on a Tuesday, you know, so there's just.
5th is Westbrook, let's go.
I have no strong opinion, if somebody wants to make a motion, I have no strong opinion on this.
I mean, it goes back personally, I mean, I think it, keeping it as close to when we originally planned it just seemed to make sense to me. We've, the schools are available, the moderator, the town clerk is available. And I hear you. I don't wanna bring it up, if you move to the 15th, I'm away the 15th, the 16th to the conference, so it's just.
Yeah, yeah.
But, that's what happens.
Let's leave it where, so, so the 21st and 22nd, is that what you guys wanna do?
Yes, well, someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to schedule the fall town meeting to October 21st, 7:00 P.M.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? By 05 being present, thank you. Hopefully a conference is canceled.
It might, you never know. Don't worry about it.
Item 10, review of citizens' petition process and requirements.
Yep, so there's been, we have had discussion, and this is a goal of the board for this fiscal year, to look at the citizens' petition process and requirements. A few months ago, you received information from the town moderator related to his research on the subject, and he's here to answer any questions. Ultimately, the town of Weston did seek to increase the number of required signatures to submit a petition. Currently, it's 10 signatures for the annual town meeting. And they, Weston has did a home rule petition to increase it to 50 signatures. There's been a lot of question about whether or not it's requiring a ballot vote. If you look at the petition, so the article that was placed on town meeting was actually put there by petition, and that citizens' petition included a requirement for a ballot vote, but it would not be required. And so we would typically treat this like any other change to our charter with, with home rule. So it'd just be a vote of town meeting, and then it'd have to go to the legislature. So what I've recommended here, instead of, if the board is generally supportive of having the conversation about increasing the number of signatures required, one thing that we've done in the past with sort of similar type topics is to hold a public meeting where the board would hear from people who were interested in the topic and could provide you with their feedback on potentially number of signatures, or whether they think this is a good idea to change it or not.
And our goal in this would be to, and I think we talked about this in the Sluckman's goal setting, would to have this on the fall town meeting warrant. So in terms of a public meeting, that's a root we take, it would be sometime.
Sooner or later.
Sooner than later.
Right, so if, so with the warrant, or with the, with the town meeting being October 21st, the warrant would close 14 days in advance. So we'd wanna hold the public meeting probably in early September, and then the board could have further discussion at one of your meetings about how you wanted to craft the article.
Okay. So in September, we're probably gonna meet, looking at the calendar here, we'll probably meet on the 9th and the 23rd. So would we wanna do the 16th, or would it make more sense to say, do it on the 10th?
I'm not looking at the dates, but we often hold these separate meetings on a Wednesday or Thursday, because there are so many other meetings on the Tuesday. Certainly, as we lead up, I mean, the school committee meets on Wednesday, but we could try to avoid that meeting. AFC does meet regularly on Thursdays, leading up to town meeting, but I don't know, depending on what week we choose, I'm not sure that they would have started yet.
So maybe it's looking at that, those two Wednesdays in there, so the 10th and the 17th, and seeing which one is not a.
School committee meeting.
School committee meeting. So I think we, we would want to vote, make a decision on that, our second meeting in September.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna look at September 3rd? Is that too close to Labor Day, a Wednesday?
Labor is the first.
I mean, I think everybody's back for school, and, I mean, I don't, I don't really have a preference of the day, but.
I cannot be there on the 10th.
It looks like the school committee is meeting on the 10th.
September 17th? Is the 17th still enough time?
Yeah, I think, well, let's, first off, I mean, because we're talking about dates, or most of us are, it sounds like we're still supportive of moving this forward.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Conversation needs to be had, yeah.
Yes, perfect.
And, and for that meeting, would, would the intent be that we would have already reviewed a draft proposal we feel like would be reasonably accepted as part of a home rule petition, and present that for feedback at the public hearing? It's not gonna be sort of a like, hey, let's get everyone's ideas, that would be kind of a waste of time.
Yeah, so ahead of that date, at an earlier board meeting, I could present the, a draft article, but I think the real discussion is, are folks in favor of increasing the number of signatures or not, and then what's the number? So I think you're right to that point, we would wanna give them a number to react to.
Yeah, I mean, we'll get, we'll get everything from, you know, like, it should be, you know, have to ballot, like, I mean, I think we have to set some parameters of, this is what this board is willing to even consider, and then kind of plus or minus, you know, we're not gonna get a thousand signatures for a citizens' petition, but someone might, I just think we've gotta put some parameters out there, otherwise.
Yeah, and I think, my take is, we have a lot of time with that, the research we did, to me, introducing it as the, the 50, because we know there's precedent setting for that in terms of home rule, we can rely on it. I mean, one of the things we wanna do here is get it across.
I think it's still gonna be a realistic number.
Yeah.
That if it's an important, if it's an important issue, that for whatever reason, we haven't decided to put it on the warrant, that somebody can bring something forward.
Yeah, I mean, someone can make an argument, they need to have 100 for our special town meeting.
I don't wanna make it prohibitive to do a citizens' petition.
I'd actually like to see both meetings the same, I'd like to see it kind of uniform across both. I mean, when you look at 10, it's a pretty low bar, and, and, you know, I understand probably the, the intent of that, I mean, I don't know, long, long ago the law was put together, but it was to make it easy, right? So somebody wants to put a stop sign on the street, they could petition for a town meeting article to go put a stop sign on the street. Something as easy as that is important to allow people to have that flexibility. I don't know if 100's too big of a number, 10 is way too, too low of a number, so I'm hoping we, you know, 50 might be the appropriate spot.
Yeah, I, the only thing I question is whether it should be some percentage of voters, because it's the town growers, and I don't know what 50 is as far as a percentage, just because as town grows, that number will fluctuate and not have, you know, someday 50 might be just as easy as 10.
You could even do something like, you have to have so many people from each precinct, as opposed to just, you know, one, you know, you could do all sorts of different things.
Well, let's talk about this at open public meeting.
Question, I'm sorry, can we ask John whether he has any conflicts before we set a date? Because it's, I think it's important for John to be there.
You're gonna be very excited for me to say that because this is something that might come before town meeting, I'm not gonna take a position on it.
No, I just wanna make sure.
But I will, but I will tell you that when I held my public input sessions after two town meetings ago, I had a number of people who suggested raising the number from 10 to either 50 or 100, and people asking the same question.
I'm not asking you to take a position, John.
So I'm not gonna take a position on it, but I will tell you, there are, there were many people who either sent me email or came to my sessions, who also thought that 10 was too low a number, and thought that having a discussion about 50, which is the number to get on the, to get elected, to get on the ballot, or 100, which is for the special town meeting. And I think the process you're talking about of having a draft article and then see what people say, the only thing I would add, because the only data point that I found was what worked in Weston, I don't know if the legislature would balk at having a percentage, if the percentage were sufficiently high. So I think the, one of the things to, perhaps for you folks to research through town counts or whatever, it would be to try to find out, you want something that would pass the legislature, not just be approved by the town. So I would look at, you know, are there things that the legislature would balk at, because they think it's going too far afield from the intent of the state law? But that's just me having studied this and not finding other examples, I don't know what the legislature would do. I would want us to go to the trouble of suggesting something that will never pass the legislature.
Yeah, I think, and what Mark was, though, I think, asking, though, is, we're talking about maybe the 3rd of September, the 17th. Are your dates, do those dates work?
Third, evening of the 3rd and the 10th. Third, evening of the third and the tenth of the seventeenth should work.
Okay.
I wasn't asking you to take a position.
Okay, I thought, I thought you wanted to know what I.
He's asking if you were, you had any conflicts with those dates.
If you want me to be at those, I'll be at those, I mean, I'll probably watch anyways.
But I think it's important for you to go, um, I think people would, I think you would want to be there, yeah. I mean, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I'm busy on the afternoon of the third, but if it's in the evening, I should be.
Yeah, my, my only reason, I think the third and seventeenth work for me, the only reason I lean towards the seventeenth is it, the third is we're advertising it pre-Labor Day. And are people going to be focused on it, where the seventeenth, we can, we can advertise it at our first meeting in September.
That makes perfect sense to me.
When do we need to close the warrant?
It's fourteen days, so.
In October.
Seventh.
Seventh of October. So we have a meeting after the seventeenth, our next meeting would be the twenty third.
Well, we have one in October, too.
We don't have a meeting on the seventh, so we would have to close it on the twenty third, September.
It can still happen, it'll just be close.
That can happen, it just be close.
What about the eleventh instead?
We could always have an extra meeting if it really got that close, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to suggest that.
Well, there are five Tuesdays in September, so you could push your second meeting to the thirtieth.
If we had to.
Yeah, Kim, for me, I, I guess the only other thing is I'd want to make sure there weren't any, um, school open houses. I don't know if we can confirm that, like, high school or something, okay.
You mean, the night of the public meeting?
The night of the public meeting.
Okay.
So, how about, how about, if someone wants to make a motion, why don't we make the motion that we, it's, it's not, basically sounds like we want to have it, we want to have it in September, and have the town manager.
Yeah, I can look into, yeah, I mean, if you want to make a motion, that's fine.
I'll make a motion to have a public meeting on, uh, the quorum for citizens petition, is that the right word, quorum?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, for citizens petitions. To have that public meeting on, uh, September seventeenth.
Second.
Do you have a, do we need to set the time, or you'll?
No.
No, because we can schedule, I can work with all of you to schedule that meeting, but we would probably do six or seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
I think it might be seven for that one, of course, yeah. Okay, all those in favor?
I, I just, I'm just worried if it gives us enough time, that's my only concern with the seventeenth, but that, that's my hesitation.
Yeah, I will.
But, but, we're good, let's go.
I don't really need the witness, I think we're going to get a a lot of folks that would say, just go ahead and do it. But I think it's good to have a public meeting, I think we've heard a lot on this already, I think that's just the right thing to do.
Yep, yep.
I think we might only get two people there.
We might, yeah.
We got a lot of emails about this.
No, but we might only get two people there, that's true.
Okay. Next, right on time here. Oh, number eleven, uh, select board code of conduct. Christie.
Um, so this is a proposed code of conduct, um, it's, uh, we've never, or you, this board has never had a code of conduct, um, other boards adopt codes of conduct sometimes following periods of, um, difficulty amongst board members, um, but really the right time to adopt this type of code of conduct is when the board is functioning well. Um, and, uh, just sort of in thinking about the FY twenty five goal of establishing policies and procedures, and then also just the need to be clear about the way that things work for both board members, but I think also for other boards and committees, the public, um, staff. I had come across this code of conduct, um, in the town of Wellesley, um, and then later found that it's actually based on a template from our insurer, which is the Massachusetts, uh, inter-local insurance agency, MIA. Um, and so, as you can see when you looked through it, it's very closely based on that best practice. I will say that MIA actually thought this was so important that in previous years, they actually gave, um, reward points, meaning so percentages off your insurance premiums in the years that you adopted it, I don't know that they're still doing that, but the reason is because it, um, these types of policies and other policies, you know, they, they prevent sort of risk, or they, they reduce risk, so. That's it.
So I think we put it in here, um, we're at nine forty-five. I hope people look through it, I, I did look through it, I, I worked through it with Christie ahead of this as well. I want to look to the board here, just for how we want to handle it, I'm not sure that we're ready for a vote this evening. Um, but do we want to go through and discuss comments? It's up to the, the board how you want to handle this this evening.
Did you want to go? Uh, I looked through it, I actually thought it was fine, the only recommendation I had was, we have, we take a, a five-member vote on appointments to, as liaisons and appointments to committees. And this policy would, uh, enable the chair to remove somebody from a committee or liaison position. And I think it should be done through a five-person vote. If the conduct is inappropriate, I think the public should know about it, and the select board should at the person in question should have a chance to explain that conduct, and, um, not give the chair that kind of authority. Particularly because chairs rotate and, in a future, we may not all be so congenial. So, that was my thought.
Yeah, Mark, I was actually thinking exactly the same thing, except if I would even take it a step further, I think that, uh, it would be, it, it, you know, it's a, essentially four people voting on one, right, because the one person's not going to vote against themselves likely. So my point would be, um, I, I agree with everything you just said, except I would actually suggest that that enforceability be a super majority. I think that all four members should vote. Just like, when we have our offsite meeting and we, we nominate people to be liaisons and, and, uh, members of other committees, we vote, and I, I don't, I can't think of a time we ever didn't vote unanimously. So I think it's important that it's a super majority as well.
Well, I think maybe you could also, well, I guess you can't have the person recuse himself from that vote.
No.
All right, so, yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure, I don't know, that's a top, topic for further discussion that we have to get into tonight.
Yeah.
Ian, I would, I would love to hear just some high-level comments from other board members on this, and then, but not make a decision on this tonight. So that's where I'm at.
Do you have comments? Do you want to hear from others first?
I'd really like to hear from other people.
I, I appreciate, in, in general, I appreciate what was put together here, I think it makes a lot of sense. I am willing to, I, I I do agree that, I mean, I think it's great that we rotate the chair, and so it's never a, sort of a single individual consecutively having that authority. But, um, and the, and the chair does ultimately decide what goes on the agenda. Right, so from that perspective, can make the determination as to whether a vote should be taken on somebody. But I do think it would make sense for it to be a majority vote, you figure obviously that individual isn't going to vote for themselves to be removed from a committee, then you're, you're requiring three out of the other four individuals to make that determination. Currently on our board, I, I couldn't, I would be hard pressed to come up with a circumstance where three of us would decide that somebody was doing something so egregious that we would remove them from a committee assignment. So I, I think I'm okay with just a majority vote, but, but I think you're right, I think it should be public in a, in a vote taken, unless the individual themselves decided to remove themselves from the committee, but if they wanted their say, I think they should get it.
If I can, Ian?
Yes, please.
Uh, so another comment on enforceability, um, you know, I'll just, I had to write some thoughts down, and I, another point on, on that piece of it is, you know, a code of conduct should be clear in its enforceability and not be tied to unverifiable actions, um, that cannot be factually ascertained and therefore not factually enforced. A few examples in this current version that we should consider in regards to that are A five, A six, B two, and B three. As, as they are, um, and we should weigh each line item against that, because you have to factually, you can't, it can't be a hunch that somebody's done something. So, you know, take for example, let me pull up, um, let me pull up one of those. A, what did it say, A? A five. So we take a look at A five, code of conduct, just give it on the right page here. You're, we're saying that the, that the board member should be well-informed concerning the duties of the board on both local and state levels, and on municipal issues in Westboro. That is a great habit to be in, and, but it's not an enforceable thing, right? You can't, you can't punish somebody if you assume or have a hunch that they were not, um, well informed, you know, well-informed on a particular topic, so it's not enforceable. And I don't know if we need to move that type of language out into another section, it's just, you know, um, I don't even know what to call it, it, it's, it's guideline, it's a, it's a suggestion, you should be well-informed. If you don't come in into a meeting and you're not well-informed, that's your own damn fault, quite honestly, right? But you shouldn't be punished for it, and quite honestly, it's a.
No punishment.
Yeah, I think.
Well, you could be removed, any of these items.
Removed from what?
Any of these i- items here on this, on this, you could be removed, if, if, if the chair under the current writing.
From the board?
Not from the board, you could be removed from other.
Points?
Points, correct.
Yeah.
Or you could be censured.
So Patrick, I think, I think to, to your point there, I, so it's interesting again, interpretation, I read this, particularly this first section as these are, these are the rules to play the game.
Yeah.
Right, and, you know, I, and there's, there is subjectivity in that, right? You know, um, number six, remember the board members represent the entire community at all times. I mean, yes, we do, but what do we do about it to represent, you know what I mean, like, so the, to me, the first section was sort of like, like, these are.
Best practices.
Best, yeah, and even some of them, though, are much more important, like safeguard confidential information.
Absolutely, that to me, that is a great example, that's a contrast, yeah.
Non-negotiables in here, so to your point, I think we could tease out some here, which are guidelines, you know, best practices, and then others of like, you know, you, that could be censured or whatever.
Right.
If you look at other codes of conduct, there are some that are extremely prescriptive and probably came out of a really bad time on that board. I think the purpose, I, I just want to be clear that the purpose of bringing this forward wasn't to have sort of this punitive enforcement, um, mechanism, and so I think, you, if you look at other codes of conduct, there isn't even an enforcement section. So, just as you're thinking about it, I think the purpose of it, I think that you'll sort of police each other by saying, hey, you know, if you have a concern, you know, maybe this violated the code of conduct, or hey, don't forget the code of conduct says this, or you know, whatever it is, but, I mean, if we're talking about a vote to remove someone as a liaison that's already been voted by the board, that could happen anyway, if the chair decides they want to put that on the agenda, so, so. And then, when you're talking about confidential information and breaking executive session, I mean, there are laws that deal with how you would be sort of dealt with if you did things like that, so. Anyway, as you're thinking about it, I think, it's, it's not, I don't think it's meant to be punitive, I guess.
Yeah, and I think that's the way we have always hoped you'd operate, but then it, it, it gives you, if you do have something that doesn't want to operate, because I have history, we've had board members that basically told us they didn't want to listen to anybody else on the board because they didn't agree with us and they were going to do it their way.
Right.
I mean, and so I think this covers it, I think, to, to Christie's point, this is the time to put it in. I, just one thing on the enforcement, I think, I, I'm fine with going, making it, we start off with that the board should enforce the code of conduct, so giving the chair the right to remove assignments, I'm fine with putting that in front of the board. Again, I don't think this is meant to be punitive, I don't, I think, I'd be uncomfortable personally as a chair removing somebody without having the rest of the board on board, so I think that would be it.
But to that point, I, I, and I appreciate that, I'm, I'm, I'm on the same page as you in regards to that, but my, my concern is that this board rotates, right, I, it, there'll be new board members, right, and there'll be new challenges, and there's going to be potential conflict, as any board might go through it in the future, and this will be held against it. If we're going to have an enforcement piece to it, Christie just said some don't have an enforcement, if we choose to have an enforcement piece to it, I think we need to be very clear on things that are enforceable, because that's what, this is a policy to enforce.
Right.
I have no problem creating a best practices section at the beginning of each one of these, saying that these are the best practices under the concept of how you work with staff, how you work with other board members, how you work with the community, here's a best practice, but here's the enforceable pieces. Right, that's how, I mean, if you're not, if you're, if you're going to pull out the enforceable part, then you can leave them all right where they're at.
Yeah, I don't know about, like, I, you know, I could be glib. And if I unintentionally offend somebody with my glibness, um, I hope you guys call me on it. Because I don't ever intend to do that, but.
Yeah.
You know, like, whether that's worthy of enforcement action? I don't, you know, that's something I think the rest of the board. Again, hopefully I'm never the target of that, but, you know, like, I, I think, uh, if the rest of the board feels that I sit, so, you know, I, what I, the reason why I'm looking at is, one of them, none of these really, some of them are obviously measurable, but demonstrating respect for the public that you serve, well, it's my, some people, I'm sure there's people out there who find my glibness offensive and dislikeable, because, you know, well, you can't please everybody all the time, right? I just hope it's not.
So, so would the board be comfortable, I mean, since we've all sort of heard from, I don't really have anything additive to this, so, I'm, I'm not going to.
I have some other comments, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
If, would, would, um, I mean, aside from anything else to share, just to kind of take this back and, and revisit this at, at a future meeting, with, with comments in advance to Christie to kind of share, so we can organize our thoughts around this. But, I mean, I'm, I'm interested in more dialogue, I just, I've not.
If I could, so, I think we don't just look at this as a lens of how we can, um, use this against other members, right? A lot of these are how we represent ourselves to the community, so it's, I look at this and say, number six, remember that board members represent the entire community at all times. That's, the community should understand that that is how we believe we should be representing ourselves, it's not like, hey, I saw you, you know, you were doing X, it's just that, these are how we should be representing ourselves to the community, right? Be well-informed concerning the duties of the board. You know, I don't think we can say, hey, I really don't want that one in there. Like, I mean, becau, and it, and it's not something that, that anybody's going to go, hey, you didn't seem well-informed last meeting. But it's that, that's the effort we are going to make on a regular basis, and, and to my mind, that means we have materials before this meeting, we review those and we're prepared for the meeting, it's not that, hey, did you read state guidelines on this that just got published by Ealy? You know, so, I, I think they're just guidelines as to how we represent ourselves to the community, and not things that, that we are trying to then use as weapons against other members of the board. I would say the other thing, too, is, the fact is, the majority rules on this board. So, whatever the majority wants to have happen is what's going to happen, so I don't know there's any way that we can say for any of this stuff, there should be a super majority, like, this is a majority board, three people together make decisions.
Yeah, so I, I, so I think you were addressing some of my comments, Sean, so I'll just say that, um, you're absolutely right, you use the word guidelines. A lot of these things are guidelines, they're not policy, and that's my point, if you want to keep them in here, keep them in here, put them in a section called guidelines, put them in a section called best practices. It's good information for board members to see that and say, how do I behave in this situ, this situation? How do I need to be prepared, I mean, it's obvious, but you're, we're telling, we're telling future board members, here's how you behave, here's the expectations of the role.
I like the word expectations.
And, and, and you put that out there, the things that, if, again, if we're, if we're going to have enforceability here, I think you need to be black and white on what things are actually considered enforceable versus things that are not, I certainly won't want to have a debate about whether or not somebody would. I certainly won't want to have a debate about whether or not somebody was prepared for a meeting, right? But because one board member said another board member wasn't prepared, is that, I mean, in theory, that's sufficient to create that conversation. So, that's why-
Yeah, but that has to get on, even get on the agenda.
I get it, but the one, the chair could say, I, I think that person's been unprepared. I'm going to put that on the agenda, we're going to have a vote on that. I'm not, I don't think that would happen with this.
Well, but I, I would say that on the side though, if the chair did that and the rest of the board didn't do it, I think that the rest of the board should put on an agenda to basically censor, censure the chair. I mean, and again-
That's just, it's into a round and round. I'm just saying make it easy.
I have an idea, I have an idea that for enforcement, you just take off two and three and just leave it at one.
Can, can I just add too that a code of, I specifically didn't use the word policy because if you, if you look at it, if you look it up, like, a code of conduct is very different than a policy. So, code of conduct is about your behavior and the culture and, whereas policy is more about specific rules and procedures, and that's not, I don't think, the intent of the code of conduct.
And I would agree with that, Christie. I think that best practices can be contained within the code of conduct. What are your best practices as to how you conduct yourself? And that's the piece of it. I would also agree with you, Ian, I'm all for reducing, minimizing this to what is the, you know, simplifying this, and you're absolutely spot on. If you eliminate two and three, you, you, you know, you're still, the board's enforcing it.
Yeah, what, I mean, I think what that puts in there is, I mean, today without a code of conduct, we're going to enforce, if you violate, I don't want to put you, any one of us violates, you know, that, that basically we are, whatever. We basically, what we talk about, we're, we're divulging to folks confidential information. We should be, the board should handle that because that's just-
Yeah, if I'm sitting here watching the Celtics game all the, you know, like, you, you guys should call me on this, right? I mean, those are measurable things, I agree with-
Trust me, trust me, and this is why we're doing this now, which is great because we have great relations. There have been things that have happened and people have, not with this board, have been what, I'm like, hello, what are you doing? Like, we're in a meeting, right? And they're like, conducting business or whatever, so-
Trust me, I know.
Yeah, so stuff, right, stuff happens. So, I think, I think this is great. I do think that a healthy or even a partially healthy board will police itself, but this gives us a framework. Ian and I were on at a time when it was not that, and, and, you know, this would have been helpful to point to and say, hey, look, like, you're not prepared, you're not doing the work, as an example.
I, I looked at all of the, the, those items as common sense, really, you know, like, there, now granted, I'm the new guy and, you know, I may make more mistakes, but to me, that, it was good to have those laid out to me and say, I need to be well informed, I need to make sure I safeguard, you know, I mean, those are all common sense and kind of what I knew, but I liked having those laid out for me.
Well, and-
And that's, I didn't have any objection with, with those.
No, and I, and I think it's important, like, if we look at C3, which is one of my favorites over the years, which is, you know, recognizing administrative chamber, chain of command by directing all questions to, and Christine and I have had conversations about this, I'm happy to be frank about it, and Shelby has broken C3 many times, right? Not intentionally, but it's just, you know, and we've had to have those conversations, right? So, so again, is it to like the board, like slap my hand? No, but it's to say, hey, you know, like, we do this for a reason, right? She's got to manage five people, we all want the same information, that's why we have it, right? So, I think this is great, I, we, we need it, even really healthy functioning boards need it, and I don't do it anymore.
But then, and we just follow up-
We don't make mistakes.
Yeah.
But you follow up with somebody outside the meeting, right? Like, hey, am I, you know, I heard you're doing this, see-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not during the meeting or whatever, and you have a conversation, right?
So, you brought up C3, so that's my other area of question here. So, C3 and C12 actually conflict. So, C3 states the board members must direct all questions to town staff and/or request for additional information only to the town manager and/or assistant town manager, while C12 guides board members to arrange meeting times with staff prioritized keeping appointments and being on time. I actually support C12. And I see, I support the logic of C12 because you just said it, Shelby, we all do this, and there's certain situations that we all, you know-
But we should, I, I-
So, hold on, let me, let me, let me finish here. And I'm thinking of a very simple scenario. We're finishing up a meeting, I don't know, maybe it was a joint meeting with the planning board, maybe it was an information session, right? And we happen to be standing next to the DPD, DPD director. Hey, Chris, what is, what was meant by this? What, you know, asking basic questions, right? Under this, this is so black and white, you literally cannot ask a question. That's not operational and guidance. We're not talking about giving operational guidance or telling anybody to go do their job or go plow a street or go arrest somebody or whatever. We're, we're asking questions about the topic that's at hand so that we have better knowledge. And I don't think we as a board should ever advocate our, our, our need to understand. As a matter of fact, I think it's actually counterproductive to our duty that we should be, I want you all to be as informed as possible, and I don't, and I trust that all of you, and I have confidence in all of you, that you will be appropriate when you have those, you know, a conversation with somebody, with staff of some reason, for whatever it is, after a meeting or something comes to your mind later. I think that's appropriate because you want to be as informed as possible in a meeting.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Go ahead.
So, look, I, I have, speaking for, I have pushed hard against C3 since the moment I took the seat. Christie and I have butted heads at times in a good way and always professional. And the one thing I, I, I have come back to time and time again is when, I don't want to abdicate our, our opportunity to speak with town, you know, department heads. First of all, I've never had our current town manager say you can't. Like, you know, it's, it's an explanation, sometimes she has the answer, actually, you know, but the one thing I always come back to, and, you know, Christie has made this point to me, and I agree with her, is no one person on this board should have more information than another member because they had the time to ask, they had the inquiry to ask. There's no like political advantage to like having that. And so, so part of it for me, it was, I mean, I wasn't doing it for that because I'm just insanely curious and I liked it, you know, maybe I'm more inquisitive or whatever the case may be. But if we are as individuals like, what is Chris, like, I'm just going to go ask Chris, Chris a question and Christie doesn't have availability, visibility to it, that's a disadvantage to the whole board because now I got information and it's up to me to say, oh, I had the conversation, even if I broke a rule, and now I'm going to share it with the rest of the board because all of, it's just not going to happen because we're busy people, right? And so now I have information and now I come to a meeting and say, oh, well, here's the scoop, right? Here's the information I have, and none of you had a, have had an advanced chance to hear that, contemplate it in advance of our deliberation through the packet that we would get.
Yeah.
And, and so, so I think, again, is it still going to happen? Because we're humans, it's going to happen, right? We're going to, we're going to be at Red Barn and Pat Purcell's going to be there and be like, hey, what's going on? And, oh, hey, how's it doing, blah, da, 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 whatever. We're going to have a conversation, we're going to pick up a nugget of information and we're not going to like pass it back to each other. It's not going to happen, right? This just gives us a guidance to say, it shouldn't happen, and if it becomes a pattern, then we all should be holding each other accountable to it because these are the rules of the road.
Again, I have trust and confidence in all of us that we understand that boundary, but the fact of the matter is, I disagree with one of the things you said at the very beginning of that, Shelby. We all do have information in certain areas that others, the other board members, we all have assignments on other boards. We know the insides, more details on whether it's the planning board, whether it's the wastewater treatment plant, sustainable Westboro in my case, I have that, I have that issue, and that's the reason why we put each other on those, so we have that additional information. I recently asked for a meeting with, with our, our town planner and, and the, our director of conservation, simply to understand how, some information in the GIS system. What does this color coding mean? What does this red line mean? I just wanted to understand, probably nothing that would come up before this board unless they came and presented that diagram and said, what is this? I'm not allowed to have that conversation.
Well, it's not, so it's not that you're not allowed, it's just that, I'm just going to play that out, it would be, and town planner is, is a little different, director of planning, excuse me, because of the, the relationship, but let's use conservation. It would be, hey, Christie, I have a question about this, I'm just going to, is it okay if I reach out to Jen Miller because this is my question? Like, these are a handful of questions. I mean, it's a minor diversion from making, wait, let me, it's a minor diversion from asking a question because if, because, and I've been in those situations, hey, I just have a question or two, and now all of a sudden we're talking and it leads down, hey, and, and I've had the department heads, and again, this goes back in time, say, hey, do you have a minute? Because there's a matter coming before the board and I just want to give you some additional information. It's happened, it's just part of human nature and conversation, and now that innocent question about GIS map coloring has become other information that I have and you don't have.
So, there's no point to this C3 then? Because you're saying it's going to happen anyway?
No, 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 I know, Sean.
Sean, please, this is just going to go back and forth. So, a couple of things.
Okay, Dad.
So, sorry, so, we have determined job responsibilities and directives through Christie for all employees of the town, like, right? Everything that everybody's supposed to do. If we then go to them individually and have conversations and we ask them for things, then we, and because of our authority, they are going to put that on the top of their to-do list, no matter what, I'm not, I'm not done.
Okay, go ahead.
And so, we have then usurped everybody on this board and put what we want ahead of that. I think, like, and I know you're talking about a single example here, but historically what has happened is people have gone directly to department heads and asked for statistics that aren't regularly available, they've asked for other things, and then this turned into hours and hours of work outside of their normal responsibilities. And so, in order to allow Christie to manage, who reports to her, we should, to the best of our ability, maintain ourselves outside of that direct line of contact.
This is not that, Sean. This is not operational question, this is not operational guidance, it's not, and if, by the way, if a board member were to give operational, an operational questions or guidance to a senior member or any staff in the town, I would expect that that person has the trust and confidence of the town departments to say, hold on, thank you for your question, I will consult my, my seniors about what you're asking me. That should be their, that should be their pushback, right there. We're not talking about operational, I'm just talking about simple questions, that's all I'm talking about. Simple questions.
Yes.
So, I'm kind of frustrated because earlier you were talking about how some of these things are not measurable, and now you're railing against something that is measurable, right? And, well, I, I believe you, I'm probably the most impatient person here, and I have a really hard time directing my questions to Christie instead of just saying, oh, I'm going to go to Jen Miller, for example, or whoever, right? But so far Christie's come through for me when I've had questions, if she couldn't answer them, she's been able to get those answers for me. And I feel like that, I, I agree with the point that going directly to a department head, it's one thing to run into somebody at Red Barn or ask a quick question after a meeting, like, what did you mean by that? I mean, I don't think any of us are going to censor anybody over that, and I don't think it's, I guess, I'm just feeling like we are putting department heads in a really awkward position if we go to them directly, and we have to exercise care in that. And even if it is a simple question after a meeting, you know, we need to be careful about, you know, what their perception of that question, we just have to be careful. I, I think, again, we're beating, are we going to vote on this tonight? Because if not, we can run through our criticisms, get them back to Christie and share them and go through this at another meeting, but I, I just-
Yeah, I don't think we're ready to vote on it tonight. I think there's some things-
Good discussion.
I think good discussion, I think further comments back. Yeah, and I think to this one, I mean, some of it's common sense and I agree, Mark and, actually Patrick with you, there's certain, I mean, you're in a meeting, you know, we're in a meeting and, you know, Chris says something, he walks by and just say, hey, you said, what, what did you say there? You don't have to say, oh, Christian, I'm going to ask him what he just said. No, you can ask that. I think that it's more of, hey, I'm, I'm setting up a meeting, let's sit down, I want to ask about this GIS thing, but then they say, oh, well, that's something there, and oh, well, why isn't that over here? Do you think you could maybe update that?
That's, that's the, that's the change. That's what I'm saying, I trust all of you, we all, I think, know that and know that difference. That's what I'm saying.
But the problem of putting in this code of conduct is that this is for our future-
Hold on, Sean, I'm not done. We're, we're talking, exactly, and we need them all to understand it. My point, also my further point on this, just to finish my logic here, we're also taking every question like that and putting it through our town manager? I mean, that's, that's a waste of a resource in my opinion.
Well, that's always been my concern, but I think we should review this.
Yes, I agree.
Because she's one person, she has five of us.
I'm letting you guys know what my thoughts are so you can consider them as you, as you look at it. So, I'm glad we're not voting on this tonight. I appreciate the time.
And that has been always my concern, like, one person, she's got five of us to deal with, like, I, I, but at the same time-
We need to have trust and confidence in each other and in our staff.
I don't think we're saying we don't.
Well, I think it kind of leads in that direction.
Well, I, I guess like goes back, I think, again, reiterating Christie said, this has, we're doing this now because we have a board that works together. If we tried to do this in the past, we would never get anywhere, but this, and Sean, you just said it, this sets it up for future boards of saying, here is the code of conduct expected of a board member, I would expect that, give it to them when they run for the board. Hey, you're running for the board, just so you understand, you, you, you want to know what it is to be a board member? Boom. This is, this is what it, what it's all about.
Even, even if we, even with this, it still requires a incredible amount of trust between the board and individually, one-on-one with the town manager.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
So-
And with the public, right?
Oh, well, yeah, of course.
We have to trust that the public's not going to elect somebody who's going to abuse this position.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But that, you know, we've seen unopposed races in the past, so I, I-
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so-
Mr. Chair, could you, could you take us down to another agenda?
I can because I don't believe-
Do we have executive-
I think we're done, right?
Need for executive session, Christie, is that correct?
Uh, no, we don't need it.
Thank God.
You sure?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Yeah, there was minutes, but I don't see them.
Yeah, and I had asked about whether you guys had, once I had to leave executive session this morning, but you didn't do it.
Am I hearing motion to adjourn?
Okay, all those in favor? Five to zero, five being present, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Westboro TV.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're out of shooting for 10:00.
I was fading.